All right, I'd like to call to order the August 15th meeting of the Marietta City Council. And roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stone.
Here.
Mayor De Forest.
Here.
Let the records reflect that all members are present.
Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Seeing none, Madam Mayor. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on one item, CS1 Conference with Real Property Negotiator. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property, Town Square Park Amphitheater, 11 Town Square Park, Marietta. The city's real property negotiators, the city manager, Assistant City Manager, Director of Economic Development, and City Attorney will seek direction from the City Council regarding the price and terms for this property.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. And with that, we are going into recess into our closed session, and we convene at 6:00 PM for a fun and exciting workshop.
At 5:00.
5:00 PM, sorry. 5:00 PM. It'll still be fun and exciting, but yes, it'll be at 5:00. Good evening. We are now reconvening from our August 15th meeting of the Marietta City Council from our closed session. Would the City Clerk please call roll call to determine a quorum?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stone.
Here.
Mayor De Forest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the Hillside Updates Workshop, Ordinance Review, Staff, may we hear your staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Before we get into the main presentation, I just wanted to set the table a little bit for you. Chris Tracy, Senior Planner, is actually going to be giving the Senior Planner, and then to my left is Carl Steele, City Planner. So just by way of some background, the city has a 30-year history of wanting to preserve and protect the city's hillside and ridgeline resources. It's not uncommon for zoning ordinances to be revised as staff uncovers interpretation issues, implementation issues, as well as interpretive issues as well. So a couple of years ago, and Chris will get into the details, staff was directed by the then-City Council to update the city's hillside standards. So the work that we're going to present to you tonight in a workshop format is intended to give you a very high-level overview of what we've brought forward after public workshops, as well as meeting with the Planning Commission. We've attached a lot of detailed information for you. In the event you wanted to have that information available, but our intent tonight is to really just present to you very high level. But of course, if you want to get into the weeds, if you will, we're happy to do that as well. So the information that you'll hear from Chris in just a moment is really recommendations to add clarity for staff and both apple. And so with that, I will turn over to Chris.
Thank you, David. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. My name is Chris Tracy, and I'm a Senior Planner here with our Advanced Planning Division, as David mentioned, and will be providing a hillside presentation tonight. Just some background on the city's development code and how the existing standards were implemented. The City Council adopted the general plan in 1994 following incorporation in 1991. At that time, it was determined that all development decisions were to continue to utilize the Riverside County's zoning ordinance until the city had its own development code in place. In September 1997, the city began the process for adoption after holding several joint Planning Commission and City Council workshops at that time to receive public input and to develop standards. In early 1998, the city implemented these new standards. Inclusive of these new standards were parameters covering hillside development. Other than some very minor updates in 2003, the hillside development standards have remained relatively unchanged since that time. Switching gears, I'll just briefly cover why these modifications are being proposed. Okay. Staff has discovered inconsistent standards between the existing development code sections that may challenge interpretation and implementation for review. Feedback from some project applicants is that the hillside standards and general height standards are overly complicated and have not been consistently applied over time. This is having an impact on our ability to streamline our review processes, and it's a hindrance for development review. Continuing with this, staff was directed by the council at its annual priority goals workshop last year to address the issues within the code. When the standards were initially adopted, the standards were applied on a citywide basis and not specifically to designate areas within the city, which has been informed to staff should have been the case. And finally, the overall goal for these updates is to provide a concise and accurate direction for everyone involved. On your screen here, just for historical context, this is the current iteration of the hillside overlay map that has been used for project review for the last couple decades. This is our proposed hillside overlay map, which would be codified within the zoning code. Just a side-by-side comparison, we're largely keeping in the same areas as originally intended. Continuing with this, the above graphic identifies the proposed map ridgeline areas. For reference, this is a, there's a number of general plan goals and policies that refer to careful consideration of development within these areas, and those are the red areas within the orange overlay there. Just for some context, on August 25th, 2022, staff presented an overview to the proposed changes for the development code, or Development Advisory Group to receive feedback on the standards. On January 25th, 2023, staff presented the proposed changes to the Planning Commission in a workshop format. More recently, on April 11th, staff had a community workshop at the Elderwood Park Clubhouse to receive input from the community. We also have a website creation for the hillside updates for public outreach, and that's in a location where the public can go and provide input, review documents, and maps, and things of that nature. For reference, on June 28th, 2023, the Planning Commission considered the introduction of the development code updates with respect to hillside development. Commission recommended approval of the ordinance introduction with the additional direction that nothing herein the ordinance is intended to hinder development or otherwise be inconsistent with current aesthetics and architectural treatment for structures located at identified ridge lines or on the ridge lines map. Just for reference on specific plans, initially, we had the hillside overlay that orange overlay, it did cover areas within Greer Ranch and Copper Canyon. This has since been pulled out to avoid any confusion. Specific plans serve as standalone planning documents with their own unique development standards within a defined area. This would include their own development standards for hillside areas. However, they do have to still abide by the city's general plan's goals and policies with respect to hillside development. For reference, when the specific plan, I'm sorry, the specific plans were originally adopted, prior councils would have determined that the plans were consistent with the general plan at that time. Switching gears here, I'll just walk through the proposed updates in this table and kind of, these are the high-level updates. So first, with measuring height, what we're proposing to do here is provide an easier way to measure height using updated graphics and tools. Providing a new method for measuring height on a slope, this would be taking five feet off a building edge with a 10-foot allowance to accommodate varying topography. Secondly, retaining wall updates, we're proposing a new step-back requirement to accommodate landscaping, and also centralized design information to make it easier to identify and implement on a project-level basis. Hillside locations, adoption of a map identifying the locations, and also utilizing mapping technology, RGIS, with the review process. Just for reference, this is our current height measurement. On the left side of the screen is how someone would measure on a slope currently. The issue here is that there could be an unlimited number of data points on a slope as there's no two same points. So what this has done is it ends up creating inconsistent height measurements on a slope. So we do have a solution for this. I'm going to go over it in the next couple of slides. The right side is how a property is measured on a pad. We're proposing to keep this the same. For the slope condition, we're proposing a high point and low point on a property as a reference point. On your screen here are a couple of different scenarios. If the difference in elevation is 10 feet or less, the reference grade point would be as identified in figures dash 2 and 4. If the elevation is greater than 10 feet, the reference grade point is established 10 feet above the lowest above-grade elevation, and this is identified in 3 and 4, 3 and 5 here. With this approach, it accommodates varying topography, and is, staff's suggesting a minimum of 10 feet be provided there to accommodate areas such as crawl spaces and basements, so for the varying topography on a slope. Also, chimneys, vent pipes would be permitted to exceed this limit up to 25% on the height as currently provided in the code, so that would stay the same. Pivoting here, I'll just be briefly covering our retaining wall updates. As you can see here, this is a current retaining wall we have at the hilltop at Winchester Creek Apartments. This is along the road frontage. We have a kind of a visual hard edge condition here. As a way to soften this edge condition, a potential solution would be to include a step-back at a height and use of living wall materials potentially with landscaping materials. The left side of your screen here is a tiered slope with a step-back. As designed, this is wide enough to accommodate trees and things of that nature. And on the right side here, you have a living wall, so it kind of softens those hard edge conditions. With the forthcoming update, staff is proposing to provide that step-back, as I mentioned, on the left side. Just getting back to our overall updates, we're proposing to remove the average slope calculation. This formula is currently in place. It's created some confusion with project review, and we have technology today that would replace that and would be consistently applied. Also with that, prominent ridge lines, we're looking at recommending adoption of an official map to reflect the locations as described in the general plan, use of the city's online GIS map, removal of the current 150-foot development restriction at ridge line locations, and implementation of landscaping in lieu of that to screen structures. Next, we'll be providing some updates for definition, clean-up of existing definitions for consistency across the code, updates for our grading techniques, utilization of new graphics to convey different standards for landform grading, contour grading, and things of that nature. And lastly, project review, we're looking at fixing typographical errors, definition and subjective criteria to improve clarity for everyone involved. And with that, staff recommends the following. Receive the presentation by staff and discuss and provide direction of policy options under a proposed ordinance framework. And two, receive and file public comments. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that report. I'll take any of my councilmember questions, and just to reiterate, we are going to use our new computer system, so be patient with us as we are learning a whole new system up here. And is there anyone that would request to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Alan Long, and it appears that Mr. Klein would like to donate his three minutes.
All right. Do we have any councilmembers that have any questions of staff right now? Okay, we'll let public go first.
Resident and business owner.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Can I have you just pause one second? Thank you so much. Your time may start over.
Madam City Clerk, I believe Lisa Long donated her three minutes to me as well. She filled out a card. Another date night. You guys are going to get me in trouble if you keep scheduling this way.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Long. So I received Mr. Klein's first, and the mayor would like to not extend beyond six minutes.
Not beyond six minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, like I say, Alan Long, resident and business owner, and I'm here, wrote all of you a letter just to reiterate some of those points with concern of the proposed hillside grading ordinance and the damage it would cause to myself, the business that we run, and my neighbors. The current hillside ordinance is applied citywide as written and originally adopted in 1998, over 25 years ago. Admittedly, the city has not been consistent when and where they enforce this ordinance. In fact, development has been approved within and outside the proposed hillside overlay map, the prominent ridge line map, and the current unofficial map periodically used to enforce the hillside ordinance. Also, it's worthy to mention, the city claims that it was not the intent for the policy to be enforced citywide, yet it is written as such. While I cannot opine what everyone's past intent was and/or is, I can tell you, the general plan mentions view shed and views from major freeways of the natural setting of many areas, one being ridge lines. It also, while I agree with staff, the general plan lacks detail and is vague in describing specifically where these areas are, it is clear that value was placed on views from major freeways for people passing through the area. The general plan also mentions these same view sheds of value as the valley floor to be protected, yet we're not talking about that today. That's probably another confusing issue. You know, I was here when this was adopted in cityhood, and I can tell you, I remember the testimony given, and what was clear with the residents is they didn't want a lot of our hills to look like Hollywood Hills. And that mission has been accomplished through a different vehicle, not the hillside grading ordinance, but the MSHCP. Most of those hills are already in conservation. And quite frankly, now from the 15 and 215 freeway, you really only get peek-a-boo views because of all the development that lines those freeways today and have been approved and will continue to line them tomorrow. The vagueness and ambiguity of this topic should not be a surprise, but the recommendations being made should be. In July of 2019, I had several conversations and emails with the Marietta Planning Director regarding the wording in the conservation section of the general plan and the hillside grading ordinance. Specifically, I informed staff that the vagueness in wording would cause confusion for future staff and governing bodies. After reviewing the language, I was assured that development could occur on my property and the current CUP that I had obtained and the past tentative track map of 15 lots that was approved would set the precedence, and there would be no confusion. Yet here I am again today. And I can tell you, if you put us in a map, but say we're in the map that you can develop, that is going to cause future staff and governing bodies even more confusion. Here's the background on that tentative map. In 2005, an application was filed by DFC Family Limited Partnership for a tentative track map on half the property I own, only the 38 acres. This was known as the Hogbacks. Several workshops and discussions were scheduled regarding the hillside grading ordinance and the potential development on the Hogbacks. On July 26th of 2006, the Planning Commission met in a study session to consider the DFC Limited Family Partnership tentative track map and one other property owner that also wanted to develop on the Hogbacks. Neighboring residents near the project overwhelmingly spoke in favor of this. No one opposed the development. It was the consensus of the Planning Commission at that time that the Hogbacks, that the project, the tentative track map on the Hogbacks would be possible. As a result, moving forward, the project and the SEQA documents were approved. I would think I would fall in the same category as Copper Canyon and Greer Ranch because my, this tentative track map had to be compliant as well and was deemed compliant. Since this time, I've purchased the above-mentioned property, and I've applied for a CUP. We made a decision, a conscious decision. Instead of developing that track map, we decided to do a CUP and have events and open up the property to the community. That CUP and its associated SEQA documents were also approved. We have made significant investments in time and money on this CUP. In fact, the property I own had a slope analysis done with the tentative track map, and the majority of the property was found not to be more than 25%. The areas that are 25%, we placed into conservation through the CUP process. There'd be no Hollywood Hills on the land that I own or used to own. Also, as a side note, we talk about technology and determining slope aspect, and we have state-of-the-art technology to determine that. That's great. I can tell you, having sat in those positions as appointed and elected officials over 17 years, I have heard we've always are getting state-of-the-art technology. The problem, and note, this is not a ding on staff, it's not them, it's never met our expectations, there's always kinks and quirks, so I would be very hesitant on using that technology. It would be incumbent on the property owner to do a slope analysis to determine whether their current property is 25% or more. I'm going to jump down to summary because I know I'm low on time, and if I can just wrap up, Mayor, and I'll skip a majority of what I have written. To summarize, my property is not more than 25% slope. The areas have already been conserved that are more than 25% slope. Previous staff and governing body have already opined and approved a tenant track map and a CUP for my property. Every single portion of my property that remains has been disturbed. It's not in its natural setting as indicated in the general plan. It's been graded, it's been filled, it's been trenched, it's been built upon. I've got an underlying track map of 15 lots, current nine lots, six single-family dwelling units, multiple accessory structures, water tanks, flag poles, and an active commercial business that's been thriving at a 30% growth rate for the last eight years. We'd like to continue that growth. I have a lot more, but I'll try to schedule more meetings with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Long. Anyone? I don't see anyone else on my...
That's correct, Madam Mayor, seeing no more.
Thank you. Moving on to council, Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For staff, a couple of questions. Can you discuss the goals of the original hillside ordinance and where those goals are
Yeah, I can read from the 1994 general plan.
Well, you don't need to read the whole thing, just a synopsis.
Summarize, yeah.
What the goal was?
The goal was hillside resources offer a number of benefits for the community. They're used as a sense of place. It may define areas or watershed. They have, you know, they're a sensitive nature and should be considered with any sort of project. So that's kind of the takeaway from 1994. They also had some conservation goal 3.2, identified and preserve significant slopes. Also, preserve significant slopes equal or exceeding 50%, so like where you're at a cliff-top sort of type of situation. Designate a hillside overlay zone and adopt an ordinance to regulate development grading in hillside areas. At a minimum, the ordinance shall provide grading, landscaping, and building regulations for special review procedures, as well as identifying areas for preservation. So this was back in 1994. The general plan set the stage for the ordinance.
And have those goals changed between then and now? Do you feel?
Yeah, so I'm going to defer to David. Councilmember Holliday, so I think in looking at those 1994 goals which were reviewed earlier with staff, you know, clearly a hillside ordinance was adopted. There were policies put in place to avoid grading in steep slopes, so areas over 50%. So that aligns with the hillside preservation. I think what was, what's lacking is there was no official overlay zone map that was adopted into the zoning code like we're proposing now, and there was also not a map of prominent ridge lines, but there's certainly a lot of text in the prior general plan, as well as the current general plan, that talks about the Hogbacks.
And one of the goals that I didn't hear mentioned is the one Mr. Long mentioned was about views. Was that not listed in there?
There is a description in the current general plan about views, the reference to the I-15 and 215, as well as lands located to the west of the Hogbacks. The current general plan identifies those as largely undisturbed ridge lines. Obviously, development has taken place, you know, over time, so those views may have been encroached upon. But I think, you know, the larger context is if you're, if somebody's traveling on the 15 or the I-215, you have a pretty good view of, you know, the topography, the features of those areas. So the views are a little bit harder to nail down. So we do not have a view protection ordinance, like you might find in some coastal cities where, you know, view protection to the ocean is important. So the context that we have to approach those in is very general. The, when we do environmental review, part of the evaluation is, you know, how is the project impacting not only views to significant view corridors or other, you know, areas within the city that are regarded as significant view or aesthetic resources.
And so we have the general plan, which describes generally what we want to accomplish on the hillsides, and then we have an existing ordinance that has, would you say, has been applied evenly across the years, or?
Going to punt to staff a little bit.
I know, that's before your time.
My tenure's a little short for that.
I, you know, I think over time, it's, you know, sometimes it's a little bit confusing on how it's currently written, and the objective here is to make it easier for everyone to understand.
Certainly.
What swim lane do we want to be in with, you know, the review? So I think that's, it's been a challenge, is my understanding, on how it's been implemented. And, you know, I've been tasked to help with that issue.
And that's a, I mean, it's good to clean it up to make it clear to everyone, including staff, what needs to be applied where. And so I agree with that. And then we have the development code. We have things in the development code for hillsides as well, correct?
Yeah, we currently have Chapter 1624, which is our hillside development standards. And as part of that, part of this update, we're going to, we would be proposing to clarify and make it easier to understand and implement.
But we're not clarifying the language in the general plan.
No, we're not touching the general plan as part of this process.
So that will still be kind of vague and ambiguous?
Well, yes, but general plans are meant not to be overly specific. The way that you achieve consistency with your general plan is through the development standards that you write into your zoning code. So I would say, for example, you have language in the general plan that talks about, you know, protecting steep slopes. The way you do that through the zoning code is you say no grading on slopes over 50%.
And my final question for the moment, so I'll let other councilmembers speak. Do you have a overlay map that shows the MSHCP area? Lands that's been conserved?
Not, not, that's, not one that's been joined with the overlay map and the MSHCP criteria cells, but that's easy enough to do.
Wouldn't that be important?
I think it would give you a context for, you know, how the overlay zone relates to, you know, areas within the MSHCP that require more review.
Well, because if it's conserved and RCA owns it, it's not going to be developed, correct?
Typically, yes.
Yeah. I mean, if RCA ceased to exist for some reason, if the Environmental Protection Act ceased for some reason, went away, I think we would have time to address that before a developer came in and make it Hollywood Hills. But in its current state, if RCA owns it, we pretty much don't have to worry about those parcels.
Correct. I will say, within the overlays, the zone map, if you want to highlight it up, you know, my recollection of the properties that the RCA owns, it's primarily in the northeast part of the city, so north of Clinton Keith, you know, for example. So the overlay zone area is not applying to lands in that part of the city.
But there are RCA-owned properties on the Hogbacks, though, correct? He left you.
There are, yeah, there are.
Looked to your wingman, he was gone.
Mr. Long kind of talked about that too, yeah, on the, primarily on the south side.
Yeah, on the, primarily on the south side, we went, Mr. Long was nice enough to have us out on his property this year and showed us around. The properties to the south primarily are, correct?
There we go.
Okay.
I did want to mention, too, while I have a minute, the hillside code section is specifically referred to in the general plan. So it's that the conservation element points directly to that code section.
And do we have differing requirements for undeveloped land versus land that's already developed?
I think it evenly applies.
It would evenly apply. There's sequo analysis for any project, so, you know, you're gonna look at biological resources, aesthetic values, you know, go through all the sequo questions for any project.
So if you have an existing property that has several structure on it, and you want to add one more, it goes through the same process as an undeveloped property?
It depends on what, where it is. If it's already been disturbed, or, you know, there's prior disturbance, probably would be exempt. If it's more of an, like, an area with chaparral or things of that nature, that's kind of where the sequo review would be likely.
Yeah, Councilmember, it would also depend on the project, right? Like, if it's, right, if it's an ADU, maybe it's one thing. If it's, you know, an addition or another house or a different lot, you know, it could depend on what it is.
Okay. And is that clearly defined between those two things in the current ordinance you're proposing?
Yeah, we're gonna have an exception section that will talk about small, you know, additions and, you know, pathways and things of that nature, as a, as a kind of an exception to any sort of grading permits or anything like that, that would trigger any sort of review.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have for the moment.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holliday. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions right now. After Mr. Long spoke, thank you for the conserved land map that we just got up here, so appreciate that. And my question is, your map goes along the Santa Rosa Plateau, as you see in the hillside overlay. Is that, could you explain what that's gonna do with the properties budding up to that plateau?
So the areas within that orange area leading up to the plateau, because the city limits are below it, those areas that are, it's like a two-part review, so the areas within that are twenty-five percent or greater, those would be the areas subject to, you know, the hillside review, you know, requirements. So it's a two-part review, so you're looking in the orange area, and then you drill down to those areas that are twenty-five percent or greater.
Okay, so of the orange area, it's twenty-five percent greater within there?
Correct.
All right. So if, from my understanding and reading this, it seems to tell me that if my property is already developed, then I can continue to develop on my property? Is that a fair statement?
I believe it's fairly fair. I mean, if it's minor, minor, you know, items, like adding like a, you know, accessory, small accessory structure, flatwork, things of that nature. If it's something, you know, more major, where you're doing like grading and, and, you know, sorry, it's like stepping back, you know, the slope and stuff like that, that would probably be something that would be subject to this review, because you, you know, you'd be terracing and doing things of that nature potentially.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add to that. So there's nothing in our hillside standards, there's, well, there's one item in our hillside standards that prohibits development, and that's grading on slopes over fifty percent. So if you're not building in an area that's on a fifty percent slope, and I need to emphasize it's a natural slope, so if you're staying out of these steep, natural areas, the zoning code identifies how you need to approach grading. So I know, I know we tried to say, say we would stay out of the weeds, but there's direction in the zoning code currently that asks developers to do what's called contour grading, so it looks like it's going to be natural after it's developed, not just to, like, terrace off, you know, a slope area, make it look like it's been, you know, obviously developed. So it's, it's a blend of trying to have the developed part of the land look like the natural part of the land. But the only prohibition is going to be in steep slopes, natural slopes, over fifty percent grade. There is a flat prohibition against doing that in hillside areas.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. I'll move on to Councilwoman Warren. And I have a couple more questions for you, but I'll let Councilmember Warren move forward.
Thank you. A lot of the questions that I had have been asked and answered. I do have a couple things. This is a lot to take in. I mean, it is, it's a lot for a one-hour period of time, it truly is. Reading this and going through this, right now, there are restrictions already on the ridge lines, is that correct, within our specific plan? Correct?
Yes, within our general plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, our general plan.
There's currently goals and policies in the zoning code, also has parameters, too.
Okay. Are we, at this point, relaxing some of those restrictions with this new, with this cleanup language and everything? Are we relaxing some of these restrictions that are currently on the books?
We are providing an alternative at those ridge line locations for an alternative screening method, where currently there's this hundred-and-fifty-foot by fifty-foot area essentially at the top, where someone couldn't place a structure. So in lieu of that, there would be landscaping to help with that screening.
And that screening, you're talking such as a retaining wall, is that what you're, is that what you're speaking of?
Just landscaping materials.
Just landscaping materials, okay. Now I want to go to the retaining wall section of this. You're changing that to require landscaping to obstruct the view of a retaining wall, is that what I'm understanding?
It's a design option. We're just clarifying different things, so people could use crib walls, which have the vines as, you know, integrated as part of that, to help soften that. When we brought this to the Development Advisory Group, this is in non-hillside areas, at what was suggested was at twelve feet in height, that we have a step back, so that you could have a tree or something like that, and then go higher from there.
Which would then block the view of the, of the retaining wall, is that the purpose?
Yeah, yeah, it would help with that, and, and, you know, just so that over time it doesn't, you know, get vandalized and things of that nature, too.
That was a question, too. So all things being equal, and fair and above board and all that, how can we be assured moving forward that we can expect consistency in how this new language cleanup would be addressed?
I'm gonna respond to that, Councilmember Warren. So, you know, we've gone through a very rigorous process. We've, you know, the staff has worked with this code for a number of years. We think we've done a really good job in identifying all the areas where we've had issues with interpretation. You know, we've identified all the inconsistent provisions, you know, for example, there's one part of the code that says a hillside area is twenty percent and over, and then there's another part that says it's twenty-five percent and over. So we've identified those conflicts. I think maybe the one area where there still might be a little subjectivity is going to be in retaining walls. So although we do have a standard, which we're suggesting to require, you know, offsets, if you will, in landscaping, we are tightening the standards, I would say, a little bit. You know, right now, you've got a code that says you can build a retaining wall, subject to, you know, further review, as long as you've got landscaping built into it. So there's no limitation on how high that retaining wall can be. So we've adjusted it to say, we really want to see retaining walls that are no higher than six feet, and then have a step back, and then another six feet, and a step back, and then within that step back, landscaping. So I would say that's the one area we're tightening up. But with the, with the other areas, we think we've done a really good job in eliminating all of the conflicting, inconsistent, and unclear, you know, provisions of the code.
That's my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. With the MSHCP map that was handed out, was this looked at when the proposed prominent ridge line map was created from staff? And knowing that it was already conserving what seems like a lot of the same land that's gonna be in the proposed map for the overlay?
We did look at some of the RCA lands and city-owned properties that are, you know, identified for conservation as part of this overall effort. I mean, we can definitely provide an additional overlay as part of this exhibit. I think for informational purposes, it's just, this is just a tool to help us with review. Should anything change in the future, that's kind of the idea.
The, what year was the MSHCP adopted here for that conservation?
Two thousand and three. I, if I remember correctly, I was at another jurisdiction when it was being implemented, but I do remember that's kind of when it was being rolled out.
Okay. And just for clarity, what, with the ridge line, the prominent ridge line overlay, bringing these properties identified into this map, being more restricted for development in the future, what would that accomplish that this does not?
So I want to make sure we're talking about the same type of conservation. So with the MSHCP, there are criteria cells, everyone's probably familiar with the term, where there is, you know, very strong interest and preference from the MSHCP, and probably the other, I'll call them the resource agencies, Fish and Wildlife and Department of Fish and Game, for avoiding habitat and endangered species. And, and so when we go through a project and we review how a project is going to impact criteria cells within the MSHCP, our goal is avoidance and working with the agencies. So, so there's a preservation, and from that standpoint, there's also areas of the city where the MSHCP, where the agency, the RCA, has actually just outright bought properties. So when you say preservation, I'm thinking of the instance where the RCA has, has bought the land and it'll never be developed.
Yeah.
That is a form of preservation. The other form of preservation I just talked about in development terms is really avoidance. So I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. It, it sounds like we should prepare an overlay map for you that shows criteria cells, that the MSHCP is interested in avoiding having disturbances versus, you know, property that the MSHCP has just, and other agencies have just outright purchased for conservation. So that sounds like a missing piece of information that we should bring back to you.
That, yeah, I think we've, will, that will be very helpful for further analysis on what, you know, these are very similar maps, I guess, looking at them, just having both side by side.
Sure.
The, the hillside ordinance adopted, what year was that first adopted? I think you mentioned it earlier.
Nineteen ninety-eight, when it came in with the zoning ordinance back then.
Okay. And there was no prominent ridge line language in that ordinance?
No, there was some definitions that are, by and large, are the same as back then, so that's just been carried over, over all these years.
And did you use that language or that direction to create the map that you showed here?
Correct, yeah, that was kind of the baseline.
And so with a property like Mr. Long's, putting some of that into the prominent ridge line designation, I guess, what is that going to accomplish for the conservation effort?
Well, I think, you know, we would want to look at the MSHCP plan and identify, you know, are there criteria cells where avoidance is preferred? So if Mr. Long, you know, has future development plans for his property, part of the process that we would engage in is looking at where those, you know, sensitive areas are on his property, and avoiding those and directing development elsewhere on the property. The, you know, the ridge line map, it doesn't, so right now, we've got a restriction in the existing code that says you can't develop within fifty vertical feet of the top of the ridge and a hundred-and-fifty feet on the sides.
Yeah.
That's an existing restriction. I know Mr. Long's property is, is developed today. If, just to throw a hypothetical out there, if his property was a natural property, I know he said that there's a lot of man-made, a lot of grading and things like that have taken place over the years, but if that were a natural property, under the existing standards, that property, that top of the ridge line couldn't be developed today. So we're replacing that. We're saying, we want to use landscaping as a means of preventing, the term that gets used is skylighting, where you see structures, you know, on the top of a hill, you're looking up and you see, you know, a two or three-story residence. So rather than having a restriction on development that says you can't build on a ridge line, we're opting for landscaping. So I don't know if that applies to Mr. Long's property, because again, with his, with the information that he provided, that has been, you know, altered over the years, I can't say if it's, you know, man-made or natural, you know, slope condition at this time. It would be part of the, you know, the processes we go through evaluating projects. But, you know, as far as what we're recommending tonight, or that you consider, is not to, is to eliminate the restriction on ridge line development and replace it with the landscape screen.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No. That's, that's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Before I go on to the specific question, I just want to clarify some questions that I have on this conversation between you and Councilman Lavelle. So my understanding is that the slope area, the mountain area of Allen's property has been dedicated to RCA, is that correct?
I'm not personally familiar with that.
Yes, he's saying yes, it's been all dedicated. And so you're basically saying that you want to change the policy, so the ridge line of the top of his property, you want it to be all landscaped. But is he allowed to continue expanding his business with structures, but not on the ridge line? Am I understanding that that is correct?
If I could clarify, so the, if Mr. Long's property was undeveloped today and the ridge line was natural.
Right.
He would not be able to develop based on the current standards.
Right.
And so in lieu of that condition, we're recommending a, an approach where landscaping is used when new development occurs on a ridge line. So as, if somebody submits a request, then, and they develop on a ridge line, if this code amendment is ultimately passed, we would work with the property owner to develop a landscape plan that avoids that skylighting reference I alluded to earlier.
And so today, if the Long family decides to add more amenities, more buildings to their property, are, will they be able to do that?
Under the current standards, it depends on where the structures are located.
Okay.
If it's within the current restricted envelope, probably not. I mean, there's a variance process you could go through. And then, you know, the other question is, and I'll try not to be too technical and get into the weeds on it, but, you know, there, there could be a question of whether or not it's a natural ridge line. I mean, that's a question that we haven't answered, but, but clearly, in, you know, the city's past practice and recognition has been that that area, the Hogbacks, is a prominent ridge line within the city.
Okay. On to the specific question I have. Carl, do you mind coming and getting this graphic, please, and, and sharing it with your colleagues? And then I'm gonna ask the question. Thank you so much. With regards to a retaining wall, this retaining wall is in the back of a retail store. So my question to you is, based on the new policy that you're gonna put in place with regards to landscaping, would they be affected by, by the new policy with landscaping, knowing that you cannot see that retaining wall from the street?
I, it would be a, like a front, let me, if I may, I'm gonna pull up the image I had up here before, oops, sorry.
Because remember, everything's about interpretation, and when all of you are retired and gone, and we have new planners, and again, the policy's gonna be about interpretation. And so if, if this is the policy, which visually I see here... And so if, if this is the policy, which visually I see here, is that going to affect a retaining wall that you cannot see from the street?
Yeah, it looks like this is, so this would be outside of the hillside overlay. And as proposed in the code amendment, at 12 feet, there would be a setback. You could continue to go higher.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that's just under consideration. It's not, as it is today, you can go as high as the main structure. You could have a retaining wall up to 150 feet in some places, potentially.
That concludes my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. A couple more questions for you. The verbiage in, in our new policy, is it also, I, I didn't see anything in there that was specific to say it's going to protect already developed properties. Is there?
The, well, the, the standards would apply to developed and undeveloped properties. So when, when we change zoning codes, whatever happened in the past becomes grandfathered in. So if there's new development that occurs on a property, it would have to comply with the current standards only for the part that's being developed, not the entire piece.
So as, as I'm looking at the map and such, and, and so, let's say that a home that is on the slope wants to put in a barn. And now that this is going to prohibit that from occurring, or could you explain the current policy versus a policy to allow expansion?
Sure. So remember, the only prohibition is grading on a slope over 50%. It's allowed anywhere else on, on a property, grading and development. So in your example, if the barn is on a slope that's less than 50%, it can be built with appropriate grading plans and probably retaining walls and so forth, that it, there's going to be no change, other than maybe the height of retaining walls where you have to have landscaping. If these changes move forward, in your, if, if the grading or if the development of the barn is taking place on a slope over 50%, it's prohibited today under the current code. It would be prohibited under the code if you adopt these changes as well. We're not making a change to that.
No changes to that. Okay. Thank, thank you for that clarification. Is there a way that, and, and I know we're pushing into our next meeting, is there a way that we could continue this and bring it back? And maybe we could have, I heard from consensus from my fellow colleagues, that we'd like to have some clarification on reserved properties, properties that are conserved, conserved land properties. Could that, could that be done for us?
Absolutely.
So, and brought back? And, and we appreciate the time that you're spending on this to try to clarify, to allow development to occur. And, you know, I, I hadn't been elected very long and a proposal came in that this hillside ordinance came up and it was very contentious. And I don't wish to have that happen to us again. And I know you don't as well. So if we could have complete clarity and transparency as we move forward, I think that would be absolutely fabulous. And I know that puts more work on you, but thank you because in the future, when we're long gone, it'll be clear.
Madam Mayor, make one comment before you finish this item.
Sure. Councilmember Holiday.
And if I have consensus on this as well, we'd like to, I would like to see a differentiation between undeveloped land and currently developed land. And my, my initial thought is the development code is probably sufficient to cover land that's already developed with everything that we have in there, but I don't know the hillside ordinance adds to that.
But Councilmember, can I, Councilmember Holiday, would that be property that had a, like a supposed, you know, tentative track map? Because that would be considered developed property then.
Well, that's not developed, it's undisturbed land at that point. They just have a tentative track map. I would be looking for things that already have structures on them.
Okay. Okay.
And there's several on the hillsides throughout Marietta that already have homes and other things built on them. And what I don't want to see is a blanket ordinance that unfairly puts a, a burden on those that already have structures, homes, living there. They want to put an ADU, as you had mentioned, and put an ADU on there and all of a sudden they have to go through this whole extra step that really they shouldn't have to. I agree with the screening, I agree with the landscape, I agree with a lot of the things that you're doing, but I think a lot of that's already covered in the development code. So anyhow, if I have consensus on that, I'd like to explore that a little bit.
Thank you. So if I could clarify, Mayor and Councilmember Holiday, so are you looking for examples of how the, the code applies today as, as the mayor was describing in her scenario, where you have, you know, what happens today, what happens if the code is adopted?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Holiday basically said everything I wanted to ask for as well. I just wanted to know the undeveloped and developed as it sits now. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I would like to take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 6:10. So thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the little bit of a delay, but we are now back calling our meeting to order and reconvening the August 15th meeting of the Marietta City Council from our workshop. Before I get started, I want to let you know that at 6:45, or at a time soon thereafter, we will hold a public hearing on City Council District for the Marietta Hills specific plan. I would also like to make note that we have officially transitioned into a new agenda management system. Things may look a little bit different and we may be a little slower than we normally are. So please be patient with us as we move forward with this. If you have any questions, please reach out to our city clerk, who will be available to assist you in navigating and using our new system. All right. Announcements from closed session. Madam City Attorney, will you start us off and provide a report from our closed session?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on one item to confer with its real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Roll call. Would the city clerk please call roll to determine a quorum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Holiday?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Here.
Mayor DeForest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
We're moving on to our Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. I would like to invite Pastor Wes Brown from Gateway Church of the Nazarene to the podium to lead us in both. Would you please rise?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you stand and place your right hand over your heart and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now will you bow with me and let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we do in all of life, we come to you at the outset of this public meeting to seek the guidance and the leading of the Holy Spirit. Father, we pray your blessings upon our city leaders. We thank you for their astute leadership. And Father, for the wonderful quality of life they provide to us here. Be with us tonight in all of the deliberations and God, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
You may be seated. And thank you so much, Pastor Brown. And also for sharing with us that Pastor Brown's been here for two years and saying that Marietta is the most amazing place to live. So thank you for bringing that positiveness to us today. Thank you. All right. Moving on to presentations. Madam City Clerk, trauma intervention programs for Riverside County.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Magda Stewart, the CEO of Trauma Intervention Programs of Riverside County, to speak on the program.
Welcome.
Mayor, councilmembers and staff, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Magda Stewart and I'm the CEO for the Trauma Intervention Program of Riverside County, also known as TIP. For those of, in the audience who are not familiar with TIP, we are a 24/7/365 nonprofit organization of specially trained volunteers who are requested by police, firefighters and paramedics, and emergency room nurses and doctors to scenes of a trauma. Our job on traumatic events is to provide emotional and practical support to the survivors while our first responders work on the injured or the victims. On scene, we are emotional and practical support as well as we are liaison between the survivors and our first responder partners. Because by us being on scene, they can focus on their job, get their job done quicker, and they can clear the scene a lot sooner if our call does not involve a coroner. If coroner releases to the family, our first responder partners know that. We stay with that family, we arrange for mortuary pickup, and we stay until our loved one is picked up. So we become a force multiplier for our first responders because it gives them the opportunity to get back into service. Tonight I'm here just to kind of give you an update as to what we've been doing for the last couple of years. We actually just celebrated our 30th anniversary. We've been serving this valley since 1992 and we've been serving the city of Marietta Valley, Marietta since then. For the last couple of years, we've been really busy at trying to figure out ways to expand and ways to provide more services to the county in general. And a couple of years ago, we partnered with Safe Family Justice Center. Safe is the nine to five, Monday through Friday, since we're a 24/7/365 if we're called out to domestic violence call. After hours and on the weekend, we do an intake with that survivor and we do a warm handoff to Safe the following business day, which means that these folks will not fall through the cracks. We've also partnered up with the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Riverside County, and the goal is to make sure that suicide lost survivors get the help and resources that they need immediately after the loss. Because we know that statistics show that those that suffer a loss due to suicide are more likely to become suicide victims themselves. But it also shows that if they get the help they need early enough, that, that is preventable. So we've partnered with the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Riverside County. I also am here tonight because I do want to promote a couple of events that we have coming up. We are celebrating our 16th Annual Heroes with Heart Awards Dinner, which is where we recognize lay citizens as well as our first responder partners who go above and beyond the line of duty. In other words, they've shown extraordinary compassion to those that they are called to serve. Those are, that are nominated are either nominated by TIP volunteers that have seen these folks on scene and have seen them do this act of compassion, or by their own peers. And our event is on October 21st at Pichanga. So I am inviting everyone to attend. We'd love to see everyone there. I'm hoping to see some nominations here. I hear there's a couple coming from both PD and fire, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed for that. And also, the last thing that I'd love to promote is our Volunteer Training Academy. Without our volunteers, we couldn't do what we do, and we've been doing it for a long time, but it takes a village. And we do have a training academy coming up starting November 2nd. And if anyone is interested in becoming a volunteer, they can go onto our website and fill out the little information to become a volunteer form and we would get back to them. Volunteers go through 55 hours of training. They are life scanned, fingerprinted. We do do background check. So anybody interested, please go onto our website and take a look at that. Does, does anybody have any questions? Because I want to try to stay away in under five minutes.
Well, thank you very much for coming and thank you for what you do. I know my husband is in law enforcement and you have served him well, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your advocates are amazing. Any other comments from any of my colleagues?
Yeah, your organization is phenomenal. I've been familiar with them for close to 30 years now and we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Good night.
Thank you. Moving on to one of my favorite things is our certificates of recognition. Hernandez Kickboxing Fitness. We have, each council member has, I don't see that we have a mic down there, so we can do it up here from the dais and then we can present the awards as well. Or as we go down, as your name is called, if you would please come forward and take your center stage, which it sounds like you have had center stage already. So I will start. To start, the city of Marietta would like to recognize Ethan Barrett. Perfect, Ethan, right there. The City Council and the city of Marietta do hereby recognize and congratulate Ethan Barrett for participating in the United States Fight League 2023 Nationals and being awarded And we congratulate him. And moving on, Councilmember Stone.
The next certificate goes to Alyssa Campos, who also took third place.
Councilmember Holiday.
The next certificate goes to Uriel Cruz for being awarded first place and earning the bronze medal at the 2023 International Mixed Martial Arts Federation Worlds Tournament in Abu Dhabi.
Oh, wow. Councilmember Warren?
The next certificate is awarded to Jersey Brodaske, third place.
Councilmember Lavelle?
I'm going to try this Zadkeel Cruz. Is that how you say that? So, so Zadkeel was being awarded first place for qualifying for the 2023 International Mixed Martial Arts Federation World Tournament in Abu Dhabi.
Mayor Protem Stone?
The next award goes to Isabella Campos, who also took third place.
And I would like to invite Laura Gill. And she, she was awarded first place and earning a bronze medal at the International Mixed Martial Arts Federation World Tournament in Abu Dhabi. So we are going to come down and present these certificates to you. And this is always such an amazing event. I remember a lot of you from last year as well. Thank you. All right. It's always so exciting. I love the presentation of awards, especially for our youth. It's so fantastic. So, Madam City Clerk, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? And we need to call for a motion in a second if there are none. Seeing there are none?
Did something come up, Mayor?
No. No, we're waiting. No, we're waiting. No, it should come up as a
Well, I need a motion in a second. Can I get a verbal motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call vote?
I will actually, this should work moving forward on the vote at least.
Okay, there you go.
I hope so. Let's see.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry, counsel, do you see something now?
Yeah, we do. Thank you. Our first council meeting, and I think I've learned the system for about an hour ago. So yes, great job. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, thank you so much. I just want to remind, we may need the verbal motion in second for this meeting, but the voting can be electronic. I apologize.
Fantastic. No worries. We will make changes and note of that. So, City Manager, any administrative update today?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to hand it over to Brian Ambrose. He's our Director of Community Services, and he has an update on our pool.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I apologize for kind of the length of this presentation. Luckily, I talk very fast, and so we can get over, but there's a lot to go over. But as you have seen on social media this past weekend, the community has requested updates regarding the opening of California Oaks Pool. Let me assure you that staff had all intention of opening the pool this year. Unfortunately, the pool that was constructed in the early 1990s using specifications that did not take into consideration today's population of Marietta. During the past four seasons, the pool had numerous issues with pumps and other infrastructure that needed constant maintenance at great expense. While we've always maintained the pool to the standards required by Riverside County Health Department, this year proved to be the proverbial nail in the coffin. The Cal Oaks Pool has reached the end of its useful life cycle. After months of attempting to repair the pumps and equipment, we were ready to go live after the Fourth of July holiday. However, I received a call on the Fourth of July that a significant acid leak had occurred, requiring a hazmat response that closed the entire park. As a result of the chemical spill, Riverside County Health Department has required significant improvements to the facility before they will allow it to open to the public. At a minimum, these improvements will cost over $50,000 just to get started and could easily top $100,000 or more just for the repairs to the pumps and modifying the acid containment area. Last week, in a last ditch effort, staff organized a site visit with a specialized pool contractor to determine if the city could open this summer. The assessment that was submitted to the city was that in order to fully understand the problem, the concrete decking would need to be removed to uncover pipes to determine where those deficiencies exist. Therefore, due to the amount of time necessary to undertake this project, the chance that the cost will far exceed the value of a pool, and the fact that the city has started the planning process for a complete redesign of the Cal Oaks Pool, it's time to pull the plug on this season at the Cal Oaks Pool. Simultaneous to attempts at repairing the pool, staff has been in discussion with Marietta Valley Unified School District on potential, the potential of utilizing one of their pools during the weekends. Last Friday, staff toured the Marietta Mesa High School Pool Facility with school district staff, and at this time, we are still working with them to attempt to salvage some weekend time up until the end of September. Regarding the green water that currently exists at the Cal Oaks Pool, staff is attempting to keep chemicals in the pool. However, the pumps are not working properly. Draining the pool will likely cause the pool to fall into itself as the water pressure is helping stabilize the wall of the 30-year-old pool. As we have just made the decision to forego this swim season, we can begin the process of working with the county health department on the next steps, which will likely include demolishing the pool. We anticipate draining the pool and removing, not drowning, draining the pool, although we may have to, draining the pool and removing the eyesore as soon as possible. The good news is that this city council has recently approved an agreement to begin the process of planning for a complete pool redesign. This process has already begun, and a timeline is developed that includes accepting community input. This will begin over the next few months. Being able to begin the process of demolishing the pool early in the construction process actually saves us time in the long run, as it will allow the contractor to understand hazardous materials that need to be removed, as well as uncovering any unforeseen underground issues. In fact, the hazardous assessment begins with a site walk this coming Friday. When the pool is finally constructed, staff envisions a beautiful facility with attractions for all ages, increased programming, and a longer swim season. As mentioned earlier, CSD staff has been working diligently to get the pool open this year. Unfortunately, our luck ran out this year, and for fiscal and safety reasons, we have to close the Cal Oaks Pool. We apologize to the Marietta community that this amenity was not able to be used by the public this year, but we hope the community will take an interest in helping the city plan for its replacement. Community input sessions will take place both onsite, as well as a process to submit input through a website that is currently being developed and should go live very soon. We certainly, we will certainly post everything on social media. Thank you for allowing us the time to provide this update.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, and we look forward to a new pool after that one is gone. All right. Governing Boarding Commissions and Committee reports. Madam City Clerk, I see Councilmember Warren is first on our agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The meeting that I attended was on the 7th of August. The Town Square Amphitheater, Town Square Park Amphitheater Subcommittee, we interviewed a third-party vendors for interviewing for events at the amphitheater, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was fortunate to attend the legislative meet and greet with Congressman Isa. I attended the meeting with our city, our mayor, our city manager, both assistant city managers and our city executive team. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the Town Hall Amphitheater interview with Councilmember Warren. And also, on August 7th, the same day, I attended the Western Regional Council of Governments meeting up in Riverside, and happy to report that previously, they've had a lot of dysfunction in that entity, and the new director that we've hired is doing a lot of good things to bring that organization to be productive and limited in scope as it should have been all along. So things are progressing well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Stone.
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will just report that I did attend the RCHCA meeting. We met and discussed budget, and we did get, a grant was awarded to RCHCA, so that will help expand equipment for the SKR habitat and trying to control some of the invasive species that it seems to be this last water, great rainfall has caused the invasive species to go crazy. So also with Councilmember Lovell, I was honored to meet our Congressman Darrell Isa, and I want to kudos to the executive staff for answering some of his tough questions, and to our city manager for providing everything for a great meet and greet for him to get to know the city of Marietta. I was also honored to meet with our Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez and take her on a Mr. Toad's Wild Ride of the city with our Assistant City Manager Kristin Crane driving us way around and trying to speak to us as well. Maybe she is related to our wonderful other challenged driver. No, I'm just kidding. Scott. But I'm not calling names out or anything. So no, it was amazing tour. You drove beautifully. And if we didn't drive well, we did drive in the Marietta branded van, so that was, we couldn't drive bad. We had to drive amazing. So that was fantastic. And it was great that Kate got to see our city because it was new for her. So it was wonderful. So thank you. And that's all I have. And moving on, Madam City Clerk, we're moving to public comments. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right.
I apologize. I'm just making an adjustment here.
Okay.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments. Any on non-agenda items. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Seeing that I have a very, very long list of speakers, and I welcome you all, I'm going to limit our public speakers to 30 minutes for the first round. If you'd like to stay on, we will hear you. If you want to stay, we will hear more public comments at the end of our meeting after we finish general business. So is that clear, Madam City Clerk?
It is at the pleasure of the council, Madam Mayor. So yes.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. I will start a timer for 30 minutes, if that's okay.
That's fantastic.
And I will call up the first speaker.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Fay Wans, and I am a 25-year resident of Marietta. I come here tonight to ask you to take a strong stand against the Planned Parenthood clinic that is going in on Hancock Avenue. Will you proclaim our community of Marietta as a sanctuary for the unborn? Will you, as a council, write a letter to Governor Newsom to protest using state funds for abortions? Will you, as our elected officials, ask him to give meaningful and tangible enforcement to the California Born Alive Infant Protection Act? Abortions are not birth control. It is the killing of an innocent baby. There are many people who are waiting to adopt these babies if given the opportunity. I don't want my tax dollars used for something that I am so against. My tax dollars are what funds Medi-Cal. As a Christian, there is no way I can condone the act of abortion. I heard there was no way the council could refuse this business to open because it is in a medical building that was already established, and the owner can lease to anyone he chooses. My question to all of you is, if the owner wanted to lease space to a doctor known but not proven to dispense opioids to anyone that has the money, would you still have to approve the lease? There is an organization called 40 Days for Life. This organization has saved 23,525 lives, closed 142 abortion clinics, and 251 of their workers have quit their job. I got this on the internet. They have been holding prayer meetings and sitting out in front of the proposed offices. While I was on the sidewalk in front of the building where the clinic will be, there have only been two people who voiced their opposition. But we had many people blowing their horns and shouting, "God bless you." Again, I ask you, write to Governor Newsom and strongly oppose this. Thank you.
Leah Bronson.
Good evening, council and attendees. I'm nervous as heck, but there's a need. My name is Leah Bronson. I am a resident of San Jacinto, and I am pro-life. I'm here to share my brief story of my personal experience with Planned Parenthood and to give you a glimpse of their deception. It was over 30 years ago that my boyfriend and I walked into a Planned Parenthood in Orange County to have an abortion. He stayed in the waiting room while I went back for the procedure. I entered a surgical room where I was sedated, and in the last brief seconds, I looked at the nurse who was attending and told her I changed my mind. She looked down at me and told me, "Honey, close your eyes. It's too late." I did as she said. I closed my eyes and entered the greatest nightmare of my life. I woke up in a recovery room with other girls with tears rolling down my face. It was apparent that I was extremely distraught, but I was never asked if I was okay or if I needed someone to talk to. Planned Parenthood did not care about me or my baby. Fast forward 30 years post-abortion, God took me down a road of recovery. I went through a three-month recovery course, and during that time, a part of my recovery was to reach out to my ex-boyfriend and ask him what he remembered about the abortion. He said the thing he can never get out of his mind was the horror on my face when I returned to the waiting room. I sobbed and fell into his arms, and he told me everything would be okay, but it wasn't. The thing I'll never forget is the sound of the door closing behind me at the Planned Parenthood, that horrible place of death and murder. It took me over 30 years to get to this place where I am free from the torment of shame and grief over my child. Planned Parenthood is a facade. They pretend to care about women and children, but in reality, they murder babies and deeply wounded girls and women. Planned Parenthood does not encourage parenthood at all. They lie and deceive their victims into murdering their own children. And they want the city of Marietta to house their next abortion mill. Ironically, on the other side of the wall of the proposed building that they want to occupy is a Chuck E. Cheese. Many of you may take your kids or your grandkids there to play to celebrate birthdays or have family outings. While children are laughing, smiling, interacting with friends, siblings, parents, and grandparents, a whole generation on the other side of the wall will be murdered. City councilmen and women, I implore you to do everything in your power to stop the murder of babies in the city of Marietta. I implore you to be on the right side, the side that loves women and babies, and the side of the wall that celebrates life and children, and not the side that breeds death. Thank you for your time.
I understand that you want to clap and support them, but if maybe we can do a thumbs up so we can get the next speaker up, so we can get as many of you through, okay? If that would be, I want to hear what you have to say, and thumbs up is wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Josh Bran.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Joshua Bran. I want to thank you all for your service to the city. That is very important to me and my family. My family, we moved here in 1994. We've been here just about 30 years now, and we've seen this city grow. My family has worked in and for the city of Marietta for many years. Now, I am raising my family where my kids and my wife enjoy one of the safest places in the United States. That's important because I'm not always around as a first responder as well. However, when we start to divulge, or sorry, we start to devalue human life, chaos will come. That is why I'm here, asking you to please do everything and anything that you can to intervene in the new Planned Parenthood coming to our city. I realize there is much work to be done on the legal side of things for our entire country to start to protect human life from conception. However, I believe the Marietta City Council can still do something. You can at least join us in being a voice for the voiceless. You can, at minimum, communicate to the businesses that the residents here are not comfortable with the racist and oppressive industry in our town. Valuing human life should not be a religious or a political debate. That's common sense. It should be, it should be common sense. Nevertheless, you will have a judgment day before your maker. So will you consider that, and please do something to keep your most valuable residents safe? And please do something to keep your most valuable residents safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen Bran.
Hello, good evening, council members. I'm Karen Bran. I'm here with my family. Yes, we're local. My youngest just came from karate on Cal Oaks, and my oldest was just rock climbing on Clayton Keith. My kids went to Tova Shal before I was homeschooling. I was one of the busiest childbirth and lactation educators in the area back then, so I do know a lot of mothers here. Homeschooling takes up all my time now, but lately so has pro-life activism. I know some of you are worried about what an activist is like. Well, here we are. We're mostly women and mothers trying to protect innocent little lives. We're homeschooling, chicken-raising, garden-planting, homemade cooking, punk-rock rebels. I can confidently speak for most mothers of my generation in saying we work far harder than we ever thought we'd have to, to protect our children. Ever since this country stopped valuing unborn human lives, we have watched our culture degrade into a true attack on the innocence of children. We need to get back on track, and it starts with the issue of abortion. When this country was founded, it was believed that religion could be separated from a governmental authority while still pursuing virtue through the perspective of natural law. When they wrote "We hold these truths to be self-evident," that was... that's what they were talking about. It was natural and obvious, the natural law that all humans are due inalienable rights beginning with "life." That was supposed to be obvious. Not only does abortion reject that foundation this great nation was built on, it sets up a downward and dark shift in every legislative pursuit. You are elected officials. You represent that fabric that holds this society together, so please, city of Marietta, be a city that raises the bar back up for our country. Please do something, anything, to stop Planned Parenthood from opening in this city. We know there's nothing currently you can do legally, but there could be something created, so be creative. Otherwise, we really shouldn't call Marietta safe any longer when innocent blood is shed daily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cy Rathburn.
Well, hello. Most of you know who I am. I'm a photographer in town. I'll only take a few minutes. I'm here to talk about art in the city, and we need an art gallery. We have a 2016 program that's been written before, and we'd like to have some help trying to find a way to get that done. Sorry, throat cancer does weird things. I've gotten where I'm now putting my photos on businesses' windows to draw attention to them. I've got 90% of your website is my photography, as most of you know. And I keep trying to reach out to find people to invest. I'm on two art boards. One is, we have a guy that was sick. He's recovering out of Linden House now, and he wants to pay to build an art gallery. But, you know, with his sickness, I don't know if that's actually going to happen. And so, if you guys can put your heads together and see if there's something you could do, I'd love to come in and talk, and I'll go do all the work and be a... somebody that'll go in motion for you. And again, art in a public place is part of what was written in 2016. Let's get it done for the city, because the city is so beautiful. A lot of you know... oh, that time. A lot of you know my pictures. You know, I've been up at the plateau. I just sold the most number of pictures at the plateau for the art concert. And there's not another place in America... I don't care if you go to the Grand Canyon. We have the beauty that they wish they had. So, let's pull together and try to get some of that done, and I just hope you forgive me for my voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anna Tran.
Hi, my name is Anna Tran. I am a missionary for the Survivors of the Abortion Holocaust ministry. I want to thank you all for taking on a leadership role in a community where sometimes it may feel like a thankless job. I had a blessing to read all of your bios online, and across the board, it's been displayed the urgency with all of you. The safety of Marietta residents in the community is a priority. I enjoy reading them because it showed me that you guys have compassion and take your role seriously. What concerns me is that this Planned Parenthood business that is coming into your town is not health care. In every abortion, there is at least one life that is ended, if not sometimes two. Abortion is an American genocide of our time. It killed one-third of our generation since Roe v. Wade. By allowing this murder mill set up in your backyard, you will be making it more accessible to one-third of your future Marietta residents to be killed in the hands of abortionists. That goes against the oath that you have promised the city to care for the well-being of your residents to come. The city of Lubbock, Texas, a city that is twice your size, has passed an ordinance outlawing abortion in May 2001. It was way before Roe v. Wade was overturned. Because of that sanctuary city for the unborn ordinance, Planned Parenthood had stopped performing abortion in Lubbock, Texas. Yes, Planned Parenthood did sue, but Planned Parenthood lost. City council, this abortion clinic is only going to kill babies in your city if you allow them and let them. The author of the Lubbock, Texas ordinance is Mark Lee Dixon, which is also my friend, has committed that he will provide an ordinance for the city of Marietta, California, which would require every business in the city of Marietta to comply, the federal statutes which prohibit abortion-inducing drug and abortion paraphernalia. A federal statute which this Planned Parenthood appears to have every intentions in violating. Dixon's attorney, Jonathan Mitchell, the former Solicitor General of Texas, is also willing to provide a letter with the ordinance which commits in representing your city at no cost to your city or taxpayers for any litigation which may be filled... or, I'm sorry, filed for a passage of such ordinance. If public safety is truly your utmost priority, which I truly believe based on your bio, please be willing to consider such ordinance for your city. There are over 70 political subdivisions in America that have passed ordinance with intent to keep abortion out of their communities. That is over 300 elected officials who stood up and said, "Not in our city, not on our watch, and I'm asking you to do something to save babies that are scheduled to die if you choose to do nothing." So I ask that you would have a meeting with...
Thank you.
Emily Jones.
Good evening. My name is Emily Jones, and I am also greatly concerned about Planned Parenthood coming to reside here. Planned Parenthood is often misconstrued as the place to get contraceptives and access women's rights. From a young age, teens and pre-teens are taught that abortion is just a part of the process of growing up. Countless times, I have seen abortion used as the solvent for a reckless sexual culture. Unfortunately, our pre-teens, teens, and even our adults are being lied to. Women are taught to believe that abortion is health care and that women's rights means you get to choose to kill someone or not to kill someone. Planned Parenthood is a leader in spreading these lies. On their website, they boast that only 3% of their services are abortions. Though this in itself is a lie, it does sound like a small number if you take it at face value. When you read further, though, one learns that 3% is roughly 375,000 yearly deaths. That's not a small number. If abortion is health care, why does Planned Parenthood kill 133 children for every child claimed to be given an adoption referral? If Planned Parenthood is assisting with family planning, then why are they only providing a little over 6,000 prenatal care services? And why do they not provide baby supplies? Lastly, if Planned Parenthood is pro-women's rights, why were only 2,653 miscarried pregnancies serviced when 10% to 20% of all pregnancies are miscarried? The answer to all of these questions is that Planned Parenthood does not care for the mother, does not care for the father, nor the baby, and Planned Parenthood will not care for Marietta's families either. City council, please stop Planned Parenthood from murdering your children before they have the chance. Pass an ordinance outlawing abortion. Put your money and your support into pregnancy health clinics that will help your community grow and support your city and its residents. Say no to dismembered babies. Say no to starving babies to death. Say no to Planned Parenthood. Let's put people over profit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Morris.
Good evening, city council and Mayor DeForest. My name is Sharon Morris, and I am a proud Marietta city resident. And during the daytime, I'm an even prouder managing director of a local nonprofit called Voices for Children. We operate the Court-appointed Special Advocate, or CASA, program in Riverside County. We are the only nonprofit in the county authorized by the juvenile court to recruit, train, and support very special community members who are assigned by one of the judges to advocate for a child in foster care. This includes the two juvenile court judges out of nearby French Valley Courthouse. Every child who enters the foster care system, and today there are over 5,000 of them in Riverside County, has experienced abuse, neglect, or abandonment. Unfortunately, the foster care system can cause additional trauma. We know that children are too often separated from their siblings, they change foster care placements far too often, and their schools frequently. They lose contact with their friends, their family, their peers, and their community. It can be an anxiety-inducing, confusing, and isolating time. CASAs provide children with a depth of service, care, and attention that is rarely matched in the foster care system. They commit to serving for a minimum of 18 months, and they spend about 10 hours a month getting to know children through regular visits and fun outings. CASAs speak up for children in court, at school, and in the community. They listen to children, and they champion a child's needs, making sure that they have access to therapy, tutoring, and other resources that they need to address their trauma and to create a brighter future. Perhaps most important, they also become a trusted listener and confidant for the child they serve. One of our judges in French Valley said to me recently, "While I see a struggling child has a CASA, I believe that that child has a better chance of being emotionally, mentally, and physically healthy because of the service that a CASA provides." Today, 18 children in foster care removed from their homes in Marietta have their own CASAs. As we enter this fiscal year, we're committed to serving more youth from our city and would love more community members to make the commitment to serve these children as CASAs. We are very open to any ideas you or the city staff have to help us achieve these goals. As we know, many of our unhoused population will want some foster care, and youth in care often end up incarcerated or do not finish school, nor have any sort of support. We strongly believe that a CASA can act as a preventative service to help this vulnerable population and in turn help our city. So again, I'm Sharon Morris, and I am the managing director of the city.
Thank you.
April Miss Louis.
Good evening, mayor and council members and all of your staff. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you to speak in this beautiful city. I come as a follower of Christ who is also a sidewalk outreach counselor in Moreno Valley. I'm there to offer alternatives when... sorry, which can be found at local healthcare facilities other than Planned Parenthood or local pregnancy resource centers in our local churches. I'm here to speak for the preborn, for God's word says, "Open your mouth for the speechless and the cause of all who are appointed to die." As a sidewalk outreach counselor, I see and hear so many stories. And as a black woman, I see so many who look like me coming and going because a place like Planned Parenthood was started by a woman named Margaret Sanger, who would have liked to see blacks like me in her day eliminated. We are only 13% of the US population, and we are the highest casualties of abortion. In an abortion, we know that one person at least dies. It could be two. Will you please stand with us and for the preborn baby? For such a time as this, you were called. God's word says, "Rescue those who are being taken away to death. Hold back those who are stumbling to the slaughter." If you say, "Behold, we did not know this," does not he who weighs the heart perceive it? Does he who keeps watch over your soul know it? And will he not repay according to his work? Let this city be known as a sanctuary city for our preborn. If you're willing to work with us, if Planned Parenthood decides to fight back, we do, as was earlier said, we do have a paralegal, Tasha Baker, along with Mark Lee Dixon and his attorney, Jonathan Mitchell, who will help represent you at no cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan Broach.
Hi, thank you, mayor and council. It's an honor to speak to you today. Marietta is a great city. In fact, Mr. Holliday, I live in your district in Mapleton. I love it, it's beautiful there. So I really want to thank you for your service in allowing me to speak. This is my first time speaking in front of this body, but I also am very concerned about the Planned Parenthood coming into our community. Now, I know it's a controversial topic, and many may not agree, but I also believe in this community, there's a lot that do, perhaps the majority. Perhaps the majority in this city who do agree with me that an abortion clinic opening in Marietta would be a dark stain in our community for the unforeseeable future. Now, I moved here, as well as countless others, I'm sure, because Marietta is a great place to raise a family and loved it here. My kids went to Marietta Mesa High School, Calvary. It's been a wonderful place to raise a family, thanks to all the efforts from people like you. But I can't help to consider what many like-minded people would think. People who have faith in God, believe in family values, and strong community bonds. Like-minded people who may want to move here, spend more time and money here. What would they think about a Planned Parenthood sign being erected on the 215 freeway between Chuck E. Cheese and Rady's Children's? I've taken my kids to Chuck E. Cheese numerous times, amazing place. It's a place to celebrate life and birthdays. Rady's Children provides great medical care. My granddaughter received great care when she was injured a few months ago. But smack dab in the middle, we're going to put a Planned Parenthood, and I'm baffled on how we allowed this to happen. Now, maybe legally, at this time, there's nothing you could do, but potentially there are options, and I ask that you look into those options, anything that you can. I and many others do not want to see Marietta be a destination city for abortions. We all know the political climate in California, but we do not need to conform to their agendas and things that we don't believe in. Yes, abortion is legal, but it doesn't make it right. I would implore all of you to do what is right, whatever you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, can we move...
Yes, can we move?
So the thirty minutes that is allowed for non-agenda public comments has now ended.
All right, um, I have two that are, um, of a different topic, so I'd like to hear them in this period right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if you'd like to, um, bring to the mic Tony Lopicchio? Lopicchio? Lopiccolo. Tony, I'm sorry. Tongue-tied.
It's all right.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, before we get started, Mayor, would you mind if my colleague brings, uh, the council some folders that we brought for them?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So she's distributing that, uh, "Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, Council, and the citizens of Marietta. My name is Tony Lopiccolo. I am the president of Southwest Riverside Crime Stoppers. With me this evening is Greg Day, he's our chief information officer. Lisa Deluna, she is our Director of Social Media. Not with us, not with us this evening is Carla Gonzalez, and she is our secretary. Uh, we are a nonprofit charitable organization that is managed by responsible individuals and business owners in the community. We want to make sure this community remains safe, and we want to assist the police department with gathering crucial information and tips that help solve crimes. As you know, the Marietta Police Department prides itself on being an agency that puts victims first. Your police department has kept this community one of the safest communities in the United States for the past thirty-one years. For this reason, Southwest Riverside Crime Stoppers came to Marietta Police Department in 2022 and asked to partner with the Marietta Police Department, uh, to start the first Crime Stoppers in Riverside County. Chief Conrad was familiar with Crime Stoppers, already established in the San Diego County area from his time working as a San Diego police officer. He knew the model worked and immediately expressed his interest in supporting our startup. We would also like to thank Captain Matt Henry for introducing us to the chief. Crime Stoppers encourages members of the community to assist local law enforcement agencies in fight against crime by overcoming two key elements that inhibit community involvement. They are fear and apathy. We do provide an anonymous tip line, a website, which is in your folders, and we also provide an iOS or an Android app for the mobile devices to encourage citizens in the community to volunteer vital information helpful to law enforcement agencies to fight against crime and stay completely anonymous. It is important to know callers and online tips remain anonymous and are eligible to receive a cash reward if the information given comes through Crime Stoppers, our website, is anonymous and leads to an arrest. Cash rewards would not be possible without the generous participation of area sponsors. For that reason, I am here speaking to you, trying to get the word out about Southwest Riverside Crime Stoppers. We are looking to expand our board and also receive donations for future rewards. Southwest Riverside Crime Stoppers, uh, wow, we got the time. Uh, we're volunteer directors and tax deductible, uh, contributions from the public in order to operate this program. As we look to the future, we hope to expand our marketing reach. Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Crime Stoppers. All right, um, another speaker, Damian Gary.
All right, hello. Thank you for pronouncing my last name right, by the way. Everyone says Jerry, it's so annoying. Anyways, um, my name's Damian Gary. I live in Wildomar. Um, I'm a local realtor, comedian, stockman, actor, uh, YPN member with SRCAR. Um, I'm originally from Dallas, Texas, moved here, uh, to California back in 2017. Um, I've been in the cannabis industry for a while now, along with having helped Health Canada, uh, create their SOPs for, it's, uh, the standard operating procedures to, uh, for helping Health Canada govern safe and practical uses and locations for microgrows. Um, I've also been a large supporter of Rotary in, uh, helping with the Marietta Field of Honor just in the backfield here, setting up and taking all the flags down. Um, and then I say these things to make sure that y'all know that I'm not just some guy off the street. Um, having been in the, in business for myself since I was twenty years old, I'm thirty-three now, um, owned and operated sixteen different companies, uh, throughout my life thus far. Um, I'd like to understand a few things about y'all's perspective about dispensaries here in Marietta, including like, uh, reasoning for maybe not, cost for permits, specific locations, are they allowed? And if, uh, if they, if no, then why not type of thing? Yeah. Cool. I made the time, too. Yeah, um, is there any responses?
We can't respond to it, it's a non-agendized item.
Oh, okay, cool. Yeah, no worries. No worries. I sincerely, I was like, all right, I'm getting some questions answered.
You save some time and everything for us, but yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Can I give y'all my card as well while I have some, a minute time?
You could give the city clerk that, it would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Amazing. Thank y'all, thank y'all.
All right, uh, one more public comment, Alan Long.
I'll be, I'll be very quick, Mayor, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, ran out of little time, ran out of time earlier, uh, today, but, uh, and I, I was remiss to thank your staff, uh, it's really an important topic. And I know while we agreed just about on everything up until the map part, um, they did take time, a- and David, I wanted you to know, you know, uh, Jared, Carl, and Chris did come up to the property. We spent quite a bit of time looking at different ridge lines and view sheds and whatnot, and I really, really appreciated that. I think, uh, we both, uh, learned a lot about what they were trying to do, and they learned a lot about the, uh, the ridge lines and properties out there. So I just wanted to say a quick thank you that I didn't get a chance to earlier.
Thank you. Seeing, uh, that's all of our public comments, anybody that has a public comment, we can move, uh, your public comment to the end of the meeting. We're just gonna go through the meeting, and then if any of you'd like to speak after, um, uh, before we adjourn, uh, we will allow time as well. So, moving on to the consent calendar.
Adam, Madam Mayor, um, this is just a reminder, we're gonna have to call up that public hearing first.
Thank you so much, I almost forgot about that.
Yeah, so it's item sixteen.
Yes, item sixteen, we'll move on forward. So, um, I'm going to open a public hearing for Marietta Hills Specific Plan, uh, City Council Voting District. Staff, may we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It will be Kimberly Ramirez, and if I may just have her stay up here, that would be appreciated.
That would be perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I'll try to make this as quick as painless for you. So tonight's item is the third public hearing of our procedural elections code process. The city noted that a Spanish translation was required to please reach out to the city clerk's department. As of August fifteenth, nobody reached out. So, in 2021, the city went through the redistricting process, which resulted in the city council adopting ordinance number five seventy-two dash twenty-two, which updated the city council district voting boundaries to what we have today. The city is not scheduled to reevaluate the district boundaries until the next census in 2030, but due to the annexation of the Marietta Hills Specific Plan, the city must adopt the annexed territory into the nearest district boundaries without reworking the entirety of the map. The annexed territory is adjacent to two city council districts, uh, which you can see is District One and Two, and is located east of the 215 freeway. Um, the 215 freeway serves as a landmark between several districts, um, more specifically, as you can see right here in this map, it's District One and District Two. Following the Fair Maps Act, which provides the process and criteria for evaluating and adjusting boundaries, staff recommends that the territory be adopted into City Council District One due to its location east of the 215 freeway and the undeveloped nature of the territory. As you guys can see in proposed draft map A, it has been drafted into District One. On August eleventh, the city held a public workshop to receive input on the proposed draft map. No public comments or testimony was received. The recommendation for this item is to, one, receive public testimony, and, two, introduce ordinance five ninety-four dash twenty-three, adopting the revised voting district boundary to include the Marietta Hills Specific Plan territory into District One. Next steps will include the receiving public testimony and adopting the ordinance five ninety-four dash twenty-three at the September fifth meeting. Staff and I are available for questions.
Thank you so much, Kimberly. Um, any council member questions for staff? Seeing none, uh, I'll open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony regarding this item?
Seeing none.
I'd like to close the public hearing. City Council, is there any discussion? Seeing none? Moving, moving on. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk, for reminding me of our timely six forty-five. Oh, yes, we do, we need a vote. Sorry, I'm going too fast with this system.
You need a motion verbally?
Yeah, um, if you do not see anything on the screen, I do, I'm sorry.
No worries, um, I'll take a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. So Holiday and?
I'm sorry, who was, oh, thank you.
Holiday and Stone. And look to the screen for?
Yep, give me one second. Motion carries, five zero.
Fantastic, thank you. Moving back to our consent calendar. Approval of items one through fifteen. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from the city council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstaining from a vote?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to speak only on item five and item eight, please.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor? Yes, she can, um, instead of pulling it, she's just gonna make a comment on them?
Fantastic.
Okay.
Um, are there any members of the public requesting to speak?
Yes, Ashley Hutchinson.
Fantastic. Ashley.
Hi, everyone, hope you're doing well. Uh, this comment comes from myself and, um, from my dad, John. I am a West Marietta resident, and I'm speaking tonight, um, both for himself and I, he unfortunately couldn't make it, in support of the annual Tour de Marietta annual event, and us as a family wanting to support keeping that a signature event just because of how unique and special it is. Tour de Marietta is an event that not only showcases the beauty of our city, it also brings together the community while supporting local business, which is very, very important. It's an opportunity for locals and visitors to come together.
Ashley?
Yes.
That's not on the consent.
Oh.
I thought, pardon me.
Yeah.
Care Solace, I thought, was my understanding you were gonna speak on?
That one, too. I had two cards in tonight.
If you could speak on Care Solace, and then, um, also, the Tour de Marietta will happen when the item comes up.
You got it. Okay, not a problem. Okay, so, let me take that hat off, hold on one second, let me grab my other hat. My name is Ashley Hutchinson, I'm a licensed clinical social worker and loco psychotherapist here in, uh, Marietta and Riverside. I've been practicing in the area for nearly a decade and provide psychotherapy services specifically under the niche of trauma, combat vets, personality disorders, addiction. I'm very familiar with what Care Solace does. Um, I love their tenacity, I will tell you, they called me twenty-five times in the last six days, looking to, uh, place patients that are looking for referrals. It breaks my heart every time I have to say no, because unfortunately, as an administrator, my clinical caseload's, uh, a lot smaller. But when I saw that Care Solace was popped up, uh, popping up on the agenda to talk about tonight, I really wanted to be here in support of that as well. They're a great organization, and they work diligently to place local, um, referrals with clinicians, my understanding is both therapists like myself and psychiatrists. So, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I know that this has been a hot topic here in the community over the last year, and I think more than ever, with yet another attempted suicide on the 215, right here, a couple miles away, less than a week ago, this can no longer be ignored. So thank you for doing your part, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any other members of the public requesting to speak on consent calendar?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Uh, can I call for a motion and a se, oh, oh, that's right, sorry, sorry. Um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Stone would like to speak on item five and eight, and then we'll call for the motion.
Right, thank you, Madam Mayor. With regards to item number five, um, I want to thank my fellow colleagues for supporting this effort, and a special thank you to our city manager, Kim Summers, for bringing Care Solace to our attention. Mental behavior health is a national and local crisis, and I'm excited that the city of Marietta will be taking the lead on this very important issue for Riverside County. I want to thank Ashley Hutchinson for spending many hours in educating me about mental behavior health issues right here in our own backyard. And I also want to thank former Mayor Jonathan Ingram. A year ago, I brought this forward, and there was a policy at that time that I needed a second councilperson to approve, uh, this particular agenda item, and I just wanted to say thank you for his efforts. With regards to item eight, I want to thank Brian Ambrose, our community district director, for his tenacity, how honest and truthful he is with regards to our homeless programs, services, and resources. This is another success for Marietta as we approve the funding for our homeless encampment cleanup for Marietta Creek, Creek. We must continue to fight for our fair share, and I want to thank you again, Brian, for all your efforts. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, now moving on to a call for a motion and a second.
So moved.
And a second? Fantastic, Warren and Holiday, and a vote. Thank you, and motion passes five zero. All right, continuing on our public hearings. Kensington Affordable Apartment Development Impact Fee Deferral Loan Agreement, staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Carl Steele here with the Planning Division with the Kensington Affordable Apartments Diff Deferral Loan Agreement. So this is the, the project site here outlined in yellow on Washington, uh, across from Marietta Valley High School, just north of the recently constructed Solera Project. Um, the project, uh, has been approved, it's a hundred and twenty-six workforce housing units, it was approved in December by staff. Uh, it's a four-point-seven acre site, uh, with multifamily general plan and zoning. And also, just of note, the project was listed as one of our pipeline projects in the housing element, um, so it's a project we assumed would be moving forward in this housing cycle that we're in. So this is the site plan, just to give you a background on the project, um, you can see a handful of buildings spread across the site, landscaping, parking areas, amenities. And note, there's a pool, uh, and a children's play area. Um, the applicant did a good job working with us on, on a, a good site here. And these are the elevations, um, it's approved with a Spanish-style architecture, which, uh, is somewhat similar to the other multifamily found in the, in the area, like the Solera Project just to the south. So what's, what's before you? It's a request by the applicant, uh, Pacific West Communities. They approached the city recently regarding the proposed, uh, development impact fee deferral, and this is to improve their tax credit application score of the state. So, they applied in, in a recent round, um, and they didn't have their application rise high enough, um, so they need to apply, apply again for state tax credits. It's a highly competitive, uh, field, uh, for people to get into in, in the affordable housing world, and it's been tough for this applicant on this, this one project. So if approved, we would structure a one-point-seven-seven million dollar loan agreement for the project. Um, this should make the project viable to receive state tax credit funding in the next round. If the project were to receive funding, the loan would be for fifty-five years, to be paid back with residual receipts from the project, which kind of depends on the project's cash flow, there's, there's quite a few variables there. Um, we recently set up similar loan terms, you may recall on the Oakview Ranch Adams Avenue project, we did a land lease, and we also did a loan from the housing authority, those were fifty- were 55 years, similar kind of structure of deal. Additionally, we have a similar type of loan with the Montavista property across the street from City Hall, so it's not foreign to us. So, why would we do this? What's the benefit to the city? There's a few things. We've been considering forming a Community Facilities District for additional funding for public services, for our police and fire. The applicant's willing to work with us to form the CFD. It's a big step for us, and we'd appreciate that assistance from the applicant. It's also worth mentioning, the site is an affordable housing site that sort of happened on its own, outside of our housing element sites inventory, which we typically plan for housing. This really helps us show the state that we're doing what's required to move projects forward, and relieve some of the pressure on affordable projects in other parts of the city. So, it's really kind of great for us that this happened organically with this site. We also get some of those hard units to get, and the extremely low and very low income categories, which are part of the RENA, something I know the council knows a lot about from the housing element hearings earlier this year. And then, I would also mention the county is investing significantly in the project, they've committed $2.5 million at this point, may commit additional funding, but the county's kind of stepping up to help the applicant as well. And I should mention that the loan agreement aligns with our new housing element goals and policies to support these types of projects, and I would highlight that in my next report to the state and tell them about the project, so that we kind of get credit there with HCD. So, with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution to prepare the diff deferral loan agreement, and for the council to find the approval of the loan agreements consistent with CEQA, we already prepared an exemption for the project previously. And the applicant is here tonight, Mr. Darren Barbarian with Pacific West Communities is here and can provide additional information and answer questions regarding the request if needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from my fellow counsel? Counselor Mayor Warren?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for your report. I have two questions. It's my understanding that this is the first of its kind for this type of a loan, is that correct?
Correct, and for our city, we haven't done a diff deferral loan like this. Other cities in the region have. Our neighboring city Temecula did this with the same applicant within the last couple years, and other cities have done this, but this is the first time we've had an applicant ask us to do this.
Okay. Why so long? Why so long? It's a long, long time.
It's kind of the standard practice with the way they set up these deals with the affordable projects, I mean, I could ask Darren to chime in, but, because, you know, the city doesn't really set up these deals, but typically, the way the state does the tax credits, it's spread out over time, because there's only so much funding that you can get for these projects, and it's a lot of funding upfront, so they try to spread out the cost over time as they bring in funds.
Okay. My last question is, how does it get paid off?
I was just gonna add, that's the affordability covenant period, the 55 years.
Okay.
And so, that's when they'll be subsidizing the units, and so they'll have less cash flow.
Okay. All right, so if that's the case, how does it get paid off?
When the period ends.
So, they don't start paying on it until after 55 years has gone by?
No, so, we put in the staff report, it's somewhat limited, the residual receipts, they will start paying when they have positive cash flow, it's just not always guaranteed that they will have positive cash flow every year. We have a similar situation right now with Montavista across the street, we have a loan with them where we get residual receipts over the course of time on the funds we gave them 15 years ago. And right, it's not, it's not like a typical mortgage where you're paying a significant amount, the residual receipts is quite a bit less, but there is funding that will come into the city over time to help pay. But eventually, it'll be due at the end, as the city attorney mentioned, at the end of the 55 years.
So, it is due--
With interest.
It is due and payable with interest after that 55-year period ends, correct?
If they haven't paid it down.
If they haven't paid it down? Thank you, that's answered my question, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Member Holliday?
Hi, Carl. And what happens in a case of a default?
So, it's on-- you like to ask that question, counsel member, I feel like we've had this question before. I think it's, it would depend, is my typical response as a planner. So, it runs with the land and the project, so it'll depend on if they build the project, then who takes over the project? And then, we would obviously talk to whoever that is, whoever takes over the project, because people are living, if the project gets built, people are living in the units. If they, you know, something happens, someone will take over the project, and then we'll be negotiating with them. Oftentimes, these types of affordable projects have what are called resyndications, where they restructure their deals. Recently, we had that happen with a firm across the street on the Montavista project, they did kind of restructure some of what they did there. And so, sometimes they'll get different loans, they'll go for different tax credits, and so, you know, we might be negotiating with whoever the new operator is at that point.
And so, if there was renegotiations, that would come back before us?
Yes, we would bring that back to you, correct?
And then, in reading the staff report on the CFD, it says there's no escalator.
That's correct. So, what we're looking at for the CFD, and Assistant City Manager Holler can help if need be, but we're looking at, for standard market rate multifamily, there would be an escalator, but for affordable, we're looking to cap the per-unit cost at a constant rate throughout, because these projects can't absorb an escalator, they need the cost to be set. We've talked about that with our CFD consultant, and so, this, there would not be an escalator for affordable projects. We're planning that for any affordable project in the city, not just this one.
Understood, but that CFD is for public safety, and so, over time, they would not be contributing towards the public safety services that they would be getting.
Will they be paying per--
They'd be paying a flat fee that's not--
It would be a set fee, they'd keep paying forever on the CFD.
If I tell my public safety employees that I'm not giving them a raise because we have a fixed rate on the CFD, they would not be happy.
Understood. It would only be on the affordable projects in the city.
And how many of those do you anticipate?
Right now, we still have a couple more in process right now, and we've approved two in the last two years.
But those two wouldn't have the CFD, just these two new ones?
Correct, the new ones that are in process right now. I'd say we have two to three right now that are getting close.
Do you have an idea of how many total we would have at buildout?
That's a tough question. I would say, if I'm answering it based on the housing element, we probably are gonna have another dozen, probably, yeah.
You know the total number of units, because it's per unit, right?
It's per unit. I mean, if we're basing it on the RENA right now, in the current cycle, probably a couple thousand units, we've already entitled a few hundred, so 1,500, maybe more, units of affordable are needed in the next seven or eight years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Kensington Affordable Apartment Development for being willing to do the CFD. So, thank you for starting us off on the CFD, greatly appreciated. Thank you to Assistant City Manager Ivan Holler for all of his diligent, hard work on that, and I'm very excited that we are going to continue to keep our community safe by allowing us to continue with our public safety piece, which is, of course, very expensive and a very large part of our budget. So, thank you so much to both of you and everyone who worked on it as well, so. All right, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony regarding this item?
Seeing none.
I'm going to close the public hearing. City Council discussion. All right, I need a motion.
So moved.
Wait, I did it.
You did it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
Wow, I did the first one, so I feel very proud.
There you go. Well, wait, we have to vote now.
And now, a vote. Wow, we got our system working up here, it only took a little while, thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. All right. All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Moving on to public hearing number 18, consideration of the fiscal year 2023-2024 Capital Improvement Plan Budget and approving the Capital Improvement Plan fiscal year 2023-2024 to 2027-2028. All right, staff, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. I wanted to first introduce the item, and then I'll turn it over to our two fabulous presenters we have tonight. Yes, indeed. So, I wanted to first take a brief moment before tonight's presentation to acknowledge the support and patience and understanding from you, our City Council, as we finalize the budget for the capital improvement plan for the upcoming years. I recognize the slight delay in delivering the capital improvement plan budget for adoption, but I want to reassure you that we will evaluate our processes internally to ensure that we can bring the future budget for adoptions timely, but also to ensure that the highest budgeting standards, quality, and the best practices that will remain as our primary focus during our budget development. With that being said, thank you again for your support, and now I will turn it over to Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Hitch for tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Vere. Good evening, Mayor DeForest, Mayor Protem Stone, Council Members Warren, Lavelle, and Holliday, the executive team, city staff, and members of the public. I'm Aron Mendoza, financial analyst, and with me is Director of Finance Javier Carcamo and City Engineer Jeff Hitch, presenting the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 23-24 to 27-28, and the fiscal year 23-24 CIP budget on behalf of the Finance and Public Works Departments. Tonight, Mr. Hitch and I will present an overview of the CIP budget plan in five points, with a summary, the budget, projects underway, anticipated projects this coming fiscal year, and the regionally significant projects, and Mr. Carcamo will make the closing remarks. On an annual basis, per California Government Code Section 65403, City Council adopts a five-year plan to appropriate funding for new projects and amends existing projects as needed. The CIP is a long-range, five-years planning for all individual capital improvement projects and funding sources. The plan prioritizes projects over the next five fiscal years based on community needs, but only appropriates funding for the first year of the plan. The funding for capital projects comes from a variety of sources, for the most part, these funds are restricted for specific types of capital project construction. These restricted funds are not available to be spent on ongoing operating costs, such as ongoing labor and maintenance costs. As required by Government Code Section 65401, in May 2023, and as well as June 2023, city staff brought forward the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 24 through 28 to the Planning Commission, and on June 2023, the Commission adopted a resolution and found the new projects, proposed new projects, which will be presented in the next few slides to be in conformance with the city's General Plan 2035. Present tonight are the Department Project Managers of the proposed projects to answer any detailed questions that you may have about the new projects at the conclusion of the presentation. Approximately 15 new projects make up the $3.6 million being appropriated for fiscal year 23-24. The proposed budget reflected our staff estimates for each project. If budget revisions are necessary based on bid responses, then an item will be brought to the City Council to award the contract and request additional appropriations. Some of these projects include, but are not limited, to the park potlot improvements, library improvements, the Cal Oak Sports Park pool replacement, say that 15 times, pedestrian safety enhancements, fire station improvements, police and fire apparatus and equipment replacement. Some of the more significant adjustments to the existing projects are on this slide. The changes are necessary to complete the design, right-of-way acquisition, and fund additional construction phases of the respective projects. These changes total approximately $6.9 million. Some of these major projects include, but are not limited, to the Marietta Hot Springs Road widening, the Keller Road at 215 interchange, asphalt overlay at Hancock Avenue and on Marietta Hot Springs Road, and closing out of various major and minor projects. In fiscal year 22-23, we have completed, or there are substantially completed, projects that totaled approximately $6 million. Those completed projects include the Public Safety Enterprise Communications Tower, which greatly improved interoperability and communications between our public safety staff locally, as well as other agencies regionally, the community room at the Police Department and the Detective Bureau offices, Second Avenue and Pioneer Park and City Hall improvements. Mr. Hitch will present the Engineering Division-led projects later in his presentation. These are some of the photos of the completed projects. During the May 2 budget workshop, the estimated fiscal year 23-24 budget was $76,634,843. Since the workshop and after conducting further analysis, the carryover amount increased due to unspent funds and an increase in funding for several major projects, and several projects were brought to the City Council to seek approval, separate from the annual adoption process, because they would have otherwise been delayed. The total net change is $15.2 million. The fiscal year 22-23 carryover balance is approximately $81.4 million for all projects, $3.6 million of proposed new projects, $6.9 million in modifications to existing projects, for a total of $10.5 million in new appropriations. The total new fiscal year 23-24 capital improvement plan budget is approximately $91.8 million. The use of Measure T sustainability reserves totals $2.3 million. Other funding sources will cover the balance of $8.2 million, and that makes up the new appropriations of $10.5 for this new fiscal year. And with that, I conclude my portion of the presentation, and will now turn it over to City Engineer, Mr. Jeff Hitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Happy to be here this evening, as always, we're always so, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about what projects that we've completed over the last year in the Engineering Public Works Department. It's always good to talk about the stuff that we've been working on, the stuff that's currently in process, and then other regionally significant projects, and I'm gonna touch on each of those this evening, and I'm gonna try and do so quickly, recognizing the hour, and there's a lot of projects. So, the first project that we kind of recently completed, which you may have all noticed, Marietta Hot Springs was recently paved from Madison Avenue all the way over to 215, a project you can see in the photos, was desperately needed due to the condition of the roadway on our busiest portion of the road in the city. We also included a portion of Hancock Avenue up to Los Alamos Road, from, I'm sorry, from Los Alamos Road to Marietta Hot Springs Road. So, in total, in the two projects, was over 2.2 miles of asphalt rehabilitation within the city. We also included in that project, the Madison Avenue intersection, was all kind of done at the same time, this extended turnpockets on the, what I'm gonna call the northern leg, it was the southbound left turnpocket on Madison Avenue onto Marietta Hot Springs, and then we also included the east, excuse me, the westbound left turnpocket going on to Madison-- included the east, excuse me, the westbound left turnpocket going on to Madison from Hot Springs. The combination of those two projects was just over $3.8 million and is now largely complete. We're currently in construction right now on pedestrian safety enhancement project here in the city. This is a community development block grant-funded project, has a little bit of gas tax in it. We're actually completing a project that was from 2021 and 2122, has just over $700,000 in CBG money. It's currently under construction and is expected to be completed here in the next month. We're also currently underway putting a project together for this next spring for the 2223 CBG project, and if we can get the funding from the county, also the 2324 funding if possible, that could be around a $400,000 project, so kind of advancing other pedestrian safety enhancement project. These are important projects in the fact that when we do asphalt overlay projects, we have to upgrade curb ramps when we do those. We're mandated by the feds in order to be in compliance with ADA requirements, where you can utilize these CBG funds to help facilitate those projects to preserve our SB1 funding for overlay work. So that's some of the importance of these pedestrian safety enhancement projects. We've got a traffic signal currently under construction, the traffic signal mod at Hancock and Leafwood. Actually, the traffic signal is now complete, as I understand. Maybe some final striping modifications that still need to be completed, but that project is largely complete, as I understand. We also have, and so that's the existing Washington Weeping Willow signal is completed in design, is ready to be put out for advertisement and bidding. Once that's done, then we'll expect to be bringing that to your council for a contract award probably later this year to get that project moving forward. Anticipated projects moving into next year, we've got another rehabilitation project. We do rehabilitation project every year. This is anticipating Myriad Hot Springs Road and Clinton Keith Road rehabilitation. We're likely going to split up this project, unfortunately. The Myriad Hot Springs Road, we were hoping to have done later this fall, given the lateness of the year, and this asphalt overlay has to be done at night because of the night work component of it. The temperatures just get too cold, we find, in October, November, in those winter months to pave. We may end up pushing Hot Springs, and this portion of Hot Springs is from Whitewood to Margarita. We may end up pushing that into the spring and maybe combining it with our overlay project next year. The Clinton Keith portion of the project is from the very western boundary across the Bear Creek Development Frontage down to basically Grand Avenue, if you will, in Wildmar. That project will be done as scheduled this fall. Citywide slurry seal, this is a, basically, every other year, we're doing basically a quarter of the city. This is mostly our residential collector and, in some cases, low-volume secondary roadways that we apply slurry seal. Slurry seal is a much cheaper form of maintaining the asphalt roads than doing asphalt overlay, provides good protection for those roadways, such that we can preserve our asphalt overlay funds, that is much more expensive to do. We do these projects every two years, generally about $3 million for about a quarter of the city, and we're on track to staying on track for that eight-year program or 25% every other year. Myriad Hot Springs Road Widening, this project is a highly anticipated project that we anticipate bidding out later this year. This project has obviously been a long time coming. We're currently still in the right-of-way phase, which we've been in for the last year and a half. We currently are in eminent domain proceedings, and we are awaiting for the final court action to be completed. Once that court action is complete, we should have the plans and bid specs ready to take this project out to bid. Once that project is bid, then we'd be looking at starting construction in two to three months after the project is bid. And by the way, that project is estimated right now to be about a $10 million project, and is funded with two separate grants that we've obtained. One was RCTC arterial grant for, I believe it was $3 million, and then we also have Tump fundings. Again, was almost another $3 million of Tump funding that was contributed to that project. Myriad Hot Springs, Altamirrieta Turnpocket, this project is now complete in design, so we're putting this project together to put out to bid. We had some, we had a hiccup with the water infrastructure that was done. We thought we had approved plans, and the Water District made some last-minute changes which put the project on hold. So we're now ready to get this project out to bid and get it set up for construction. This is the right turnpocket there at Myriad Hot Springs into Altamirrieta that services the Sam's Club development. Madison Avenue, this is from Guava Street to Elm Street. This project has Federal American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds for water infrastructure, so we're working closely with Western Municipal Water District on getting the road improvements situated in time such that we can develop, at least provide, a road surface available for water infrastructure to be placed down Madison Avenue. We're anticipating this project, and we're actively working in design, anticipating starting construction on this project in 2025. In-pavement LED lighted crosswalks, we received an HSIP grant, Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Fund for this project for a quarter million dollars, provided lighted crosswalks at Coal Canyon Elementary, Avaha Elementary, Rail Ranch Elementary, and two crosswalks on Altamirrieta Elementary School. These are mid-block crosswalks that will provide enhanced lighting. This project is, the design is now complete and ready to put out to bid, so we're active, should have this under construction later this year. Town Square Park parking lots, so this is, when I say parking lots, I mean parking lot. So this includes parking lot. We're also looking at doing some potential landscaping along the front entry monument area, along with landscaping along Calmia Street with an enhanced parking lot there adjacent to the amphitheater. Design is about 90% complete. We're looking at having this project potentially under construction end of this year, funding permitting. We'll be reporting back to you once we have a fully updated idea of construction cost for the project, and be reporting on that at a later date. City Corporation Yard upgrades, this includes adding a couple of new buildings adjacent to the existing building to house public works maintenance staff. Those would be our inspectors, as well as our parks maintenance employees in the two separate buildings adjacent to the existing building there in the existing corporation yard. We're also expanding some of the parking area to satisfy the requirements of the two new buildings, and then adding water and sewer that would be extending out to Fig Street. This project, I believe, has a million dollar in construction cost. It's funded utilizing Measure T, and we do have an annexation in process with Metropolitan Water District for this property. Fire Station 1 concrete replacement, we're assisting our friends in the Fire Department for Myriad Fire and Rescue for replacing a lot of the concrete there that's dilapidated and out of service due to, it's just extended past its service life, and probably didn't anticipate the weight of the fire trucks that are being in service today from this fire station. We do anticipate, I think the plans are now at about a 60 or 70% design, and construction's anticipated to occur potentially later this year, early next year. Menafree Road Improvements, this is a small stretch of road. It's a piece of dirt road between Los Alamos Road and Clinton Keith Road. This is, this dirt road is, actually receives a fair amount of traffic due to the advent of Clinton Keith Road, once that got constructed, and because of that, it's in dire need of paving. So we are in the design process right now, going through the environmental requirements. Unfortunately, we did find a blue line stream running across the road that we're dealing with, the potential permitting issues associated with that, probably slow us down a little bit, but as soon as we get through those design elements, we'll be getting that project out to bid, which will probably be sometime mid to end of next year. Open Channel Maintenance Program, this is a project that we're working towards to deal with a lot of our open channel maintenance activities. As you can see in the photo here, we've got, you know, a channel that has a lot of sediment in it. An annual permit would allow us to be able to clean out some of these channels on an annual basis, as opposed to doing individual permitting each time. We wanted to do that, which is what we have to do today. That process is going to take us a couple of years. We've talked about this previously. We're still working forward, working toward getting that completed, at least Phase 1, which would be performing the research and analysis and establishing a framework for what we call regional general permit. Once that's completed, we would be establishing technical studies to establish the channel delineation, the areas that we need to have maintained, and then establishing specific channel impacts, proposing mitigation, and then submitting for actual permits. Currently utilizing area drainage fees, but we are anticipating needing another couple million dollars to fully fund this project before it's completed, which is several years away. The new projects that we talked about in your previous workshop, we talked about the Vista Mirrieta improvements from Sky Park to Monroe, as you can see here kind of in the image. Monroe, of course, being the not currently built yellow image that you see there on the screen, Vista Mirrieta Road being in red. Vista Mirrieta is currently an existing dirt road and will need to be developed. This project is here to be able to help support a lot of the development activity that's going on in the area, a lot of master plan, or I'm sorry, multifamily projects that are proposing to be built in this area, this of course being in the TOD overlay area of the general plan. I believe we funded this project with $200,000, kind of as start-off money to start generating design. Actual construction of this is unknown as far as the time duration, and we will also be utilizing this project to, as we receive development impact funds from, or in lieu fees from, from development projects in the area to help actually fund this construction. Same issue, actually, with Monroe Avenue from Myriad Hot Springs to Los Alamos. This is constructing, of course, Monroe connects at the north end with existing Monroe, and then at the south end at Myriad Hot Springs, it connects to Sparkman Avenue, and that will be, that's the new alignment for Monroe. Again, this project, hoping to get, you know, participation from development activity as it comes in through the area. Otherwise, this project is anticipated to be about a $10 million project, and we've only, we're only currently funding it for about $200,000 to commence with kind of preliminary design. This will eventually need funding from development and additional funding from other CIP funding sources to effectively build. Line F, another new project from Washington Avenue to Mirrieta Creek. This is a deficient channel that floods during most storm events, Calmia being the inverted roadway. I think the only inverted roadway we have in town that transfers drainage down to Mirrieta Creek on behalf of the channel that's undersized for that. Line F would hopefully be built to ultimate capacity to be able to convey the flows, if we can design it to that. May require some box covert in Calmia Street and would also provide flood protection for the houses down in the old, in the historic downtown area west of New Clay. We currently have a K rail that gets put along the edge of the road, as you may be aware, to assist with flood protection during the winter time. This channel would hopefully allow for that K rail to be eliminated. And then, just briefly, just to talk a little bit about a couple of regionally significant projects, I-215 Keller Road Interchange, which is a project that we're kind of all aware of. This project is, you know, we currently have about $15 million, actually, it's, I think, a little more than that, $19 million currently funded in that project. The total cost is anticipated to be north of $55 million. We are waiting a new cost estimate, which, given inflationary costs that we've had over the last two or three years, we're anticipating that total construction cost to be much higher than that. So we could be looking at needing an additional $30 million or so, 25 or 30 million, before that project is ready for construction. So still looking for money, if you find any money trees that we can shake. Clinton Keith Road, Phase 3, is currently under construction. It was supposed to be completed really by now, and I think they ran into a couple of snags and delays, some from weather and some from other issues, but they are looking at being completed, I believe, here in the next, in the next couple of months, or largely completed the next couple of months. I believe the bridge is pretty close to being complete, and they're looking, I think they had some sewer utilities that were being constructed in the last week or so, looking to get final paving on that road here in the next week or two. French Valley Parkway, Phase 2, this is the French Valley, part of the second phase of the French Valley interchange project. This will be the auxiliary lanes, as we kind of previously talked about. The project's currently under construction. It's a Temecula-driven project. The bid was, came in at just over $71 million. Construction commenced in May of this year, and I think the construction is anticipated to take us to probably February of '25. So we've got a couple of years of construction to look at there. And with that, that concludes the long list of projects that we are working on and working through, and with that, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Mr. Mendoza with a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Hich. There's a resolution in front of you. Recommended action is that the City Council to hold the public hearing and adopt a joint resolution under Resolution 23-4699 with all the recitals to approve the capital improvement plan from fiscal year 23, 24 through 27, 28, and also authorizing and approving the capital improvement plan budget for fiscal year 23, 24. And I'll pass on the presentation to Mr. Javier Carcamo.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Hich, for your presentation tonight. Just in closing remarks for City Council, and I wanted to take a quick moment to really acknowledge the work and contributions of our city staff. As summarized during tonight's presentation, we have new and existing active projects across various city departments, including the Library, Community Service District, the Mirrieta Fire and Rescue, Mirrieta Police, and City Manager's Office, and of course, our Public Works and Engineering Department. A total of 20 staff members across these departments contributed to this year's capital improvement plan. So I want to thank Mr. Hich for his significant contribution to the CIP, as well as Mr. Mendoza for leading, coordinating, and managing the development of the capital improvement plan from start to end. This is truly a team effort on an annual basis. With that, thank you again to Council for your support, and Staff and I were available for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Staff, for an amazing report, and I'd like to all have it done immediately, heck with 2027, right?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so thank you. I'm really excited to see Line F. That's exciting, and look forward to that getting done, and it's nice to see some of the things that we put into fruition are actually coming through our capital project, so thank you. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, congratulations, Staff. As everyone can see from the list, there's a lot of stuff going on in Mirrieta, and a lot of things take a lot of time. Line F, that completion, I remember when the first part of Line F was done back in the mid-'90s, and here we are, 30-plus years later, just finishing that project. So I know a lot of things compete for the limited dollars that we have, and I appreciate all the effort that you guys do. I did have a couple of questions, clarifications, on the road asphalt overlay slurry seal. So you said that's on an eight-year program, 25% of the, is it just the side roads or all roads?
So, slurry seal, we, for the most part, so that, to be clear, when we talk about slurry seal, those are only in residential roadways, residential and collector, and then are what I'm considering are low-volume secondary roads. And where we've applied that is Adams Avenue is a good example of that, where Adams is a secondary. Also, in, just over a year ago, we did Alter Myrietta Road from Hot Springs up to Whitewood. It's a secondary classification roadway with relatively low volume. But we find is, slurry seal is a very thin material that's placed. It's asphalt emulsion mixed with, with a fine aggregate. And if you get, put it on a high-volume road like Myra Hot Springs, for example, the, just the volume of traffic would wear off that thin, that thin veneer, if you will, over the asphalt in a relatively short period of time. So we really only apply it in low-volume applications.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. And I, I know you know, but for the public's benefit, it's much less costly to maintain a road than it is to replace a road. And so, the slurry seal, which, you're right, anything of high volume is just going to wear that off in a short amount of time. The reason the slurry seals benefit is because it keeps the moisture from getting underneath the road, which then causes that hydraulic effect, which then breaks the road, which is where you get potholes from. So that, that prevents that. What do we do for the, for the major roads to keep them in good repair? Is that only an asphalt overlay, or is there another product that we can utilize?
So historically, all that we have utilized is asphalt overlay. But the answer to your question is no, there are some other products that can be utilized. There's things like what's called a microseal. There's another product called what we call a cape seal, which is actually a slurry seal with, with, or a chip seal with a slurry seal over the top of it. There's, there are some other applications that can be employed. Our city is relatively young. Our asphalt roads are relatively young, so we've not had to employ some of that technology yet. We will start playing with some of those technologies as, as we continue to grow. Eventually, you will start seeing our, our, what we call our pavement condition index. We survey the road every three, all the roads, every three to five years. We'll start to see that continuing to slowly deteriorate, and that's when we start pulling in other tools from a toolbox. But you're absolutely right. The asphalt overlay is the most expensive form of, of asphalt replacement or rehabilitation. So you kind of want to use that sparingly where you can, and try and utilize cheaper alternatives such as slurry. That's something that we just recently started doing on secondary roads, realizing if we had to do asphalt overlay on all our secondary roads, it could get really costly. But as we sit right now, we're currently only using, traditional rehabilitation, using either regular hot mix asphalt or rubberized hot mix asphalt for our overlay projects.
Okay, thank you. And then, if you could go to the slide for the Keller Road Interchange? I saw something on that picture that maybe I just couldn't see it from the angle that it's, I know it's a graphic creation. So I see an off-ramp and an on-ramp on the southbound side, but I only see an on-ramp on the northbound. Is that accurate?
Now, there is an on-ramp in the southbound. It's south of the, of Keller Road. So as you get to south of Keller Road, you'll have a, have a loop that you have to turn around. So you'll pass Keller Road, and then the off-ramp is just south of it, and will bend you around.
And then comes back alongside the
Correct.
East side of the freeway, which is why you can't see it on this.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of there. It's just kind of hard to see.
Okay. Yeah, because the others all ended up kind of in the middle of the clover leaf.
Right.
Saw that one.
I think that was just, that's just a product of the way the, the way the, the properties kind of, kind of lay out, that at least the city's portion of the properties and potentially wanted to stay out of, out of menefy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no public's, seeing no, any more council speakers. I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony regarding this item?
Seeing none.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion from my council? Seeing none? Wow, look at, we're moving and shaking up here. I like it. All right.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. All right, moving on to item 19 and a discussion. Amend the City Council Legislative Workshop Subcommittee Membership. Staff, may we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. I'm Kristin Crane. Good evening over here. So yes, item 19 on your agenda relates to an item that was brought up by Mayor DeForest at your last City Council meeting on August 1st. And there was a request at that time to bring back something to the council to look at amending the procedure by which you appoint the Legislative Work Group. So that is what we have brought forward for you this evening. For the, those watching at home and those in the audience, the Legislative Work Group is comprised of two City Council members, where they participate in the process with staff, looking at state and federal legislation, and when we take positions on legislation, as well as legislative advocacy efforts with our state and federal representatives. And currently, it's the mayor is, serves in that role, and then the, the position rotates. It's drawn out of a hat on a quarterly basis. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. I brought this forward because this is the first time I, we've actually been lobbying and doing a lot of active work, as I'm aware of. And it comes up that, for example, we were pulling a name out of the hat for the last meeting with Congressman Isa, but we may not keep that person to actually go to Washington to actually meet with him. So, it's not congruent, and it doesn't seem to be working well. The person that goes and maybe makes a visit with a senator isn't necessarily the person that rotates through, that gets to go to Sacramento to actually lobby as well. So I brought this forward. I, I think that it should be appointed person, the mayor, of course, and another council member that would be very interested in this legislative piece. So, comments from my colleagues. I see Councilmember Holliday again.
Of course you do.
Yes.
So, the mayor would be the first, the one of the two, and then the appointee would serve for the whole year.
Yes, the appointee would serve for the whole year.
And then the next year, it would be the new mayor.
Right.
Could be the same appointee.
Yes, could be the same.
Or someone different, whatever the group chooses.
Uh huh.
I support that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Warren.
How do we appoint?
We would appoint from the dais with a motion, just like
Just curious, thank you.
Right, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the first step would be to amend the membership, as just discussed.
Okay.
We'll make, take a motion and a second on that. And then if that carries, then we will go ahead and move forward with the nomination and appoint.
Okay, let's go ahead and see if this is going to go anywhere. So, do we have a motion and Cindy, and Lori beat me to it. It was my thing, girls, come on. It's okay, it's fine, it's fine. All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. All right. And obviously, this is moving forward, 5-0. Thank you to my fellow colleagues. And now
Yeah, I'm looking. Give me a second. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so, so now we're going, we're going to want to go ahead and call for nominations?
Okay. I'd like to ask my fellow colleagues if we could call for a nomination for the permanent position next to the mayor. Any nominations? I would like to nominate Mayor Protem Stone.
A second.
Seeing no other nominations?
Are there any other nominations, council? Seeing none? So we have Mayor Protem Stone as the nominee, and that was done by Mayor DeForest and Councilmember Warren, is that correct?
Yes. And now we can move to a vote?
Yep, we're going to call the vote.
I got it in there. Thank you, everyone.
Motion carries unanimously, I believe. Guess I should look first. There we go.
There, now we can vote.
There we go. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'm excited to see how far we can go with that. So, all right, moving on to more discussion. This agenda just keeps going and going. Yes. Discussion of increasing support for city signature event, Tour de Marietta. Staff, may we have the report?
Thank you. Good evening, again, Mayor and members of the City Council. I apologize for almost nominating myself there and interrupting you. The City of Marietta currently has a classification for external special events called signature events. The benefits of being declared a signature event include the priority of setting dates, in-kind fee waivers, and marketing. In-kind fee waivers can be used for city permits, use of police and fire department staff for events, cleaning up, and trash pickup. Overall, the classification bestows a special partnership between the event organizer and the City of Marietta. Signature events typically have the following characteristics. They must be deemed a cultural and/or an economic benefit to the Marietta community. They tend to be reoccurring. They tend to be large-scale, and only the City Council has the authority to approve new city signature events. Currently, the list of approved signature events includes Tour de Marietta Bicycle Race, Marietta Road Run, Susan G. Coman Walk, and the Motor, the Marietta Rotaries Club's Field of Honor. In 2021, the City Council adopted a resolution establishing formal tiers based on years of service, from $5,000 in in-kind support to a maximum of $10,000. Before this, all declared signature events received $5,000 in in-kind support. At the June 6 City Council meeting, a representative of the Tour de Marietta spoke during public comments portion of the meeting about increases in cost to run large-scale special events. Through discussions with staff, Tour de Marietta is requesting an additional $5,000 per year in support, as well as continued support from the city's Public Works Department for installing and removing traffic control devices. There are two separate discussions regarding this request. The first, the increase of $5,000 to support the race, and the second, the use of Public Works employees typically on overtime to set up and remove those traffic control devices. As happens with such a valuable partner such as Tour de Marietta, there are pros and cons regarding this request. As it is staff's responsibility to provide the City Council with non-biased information in order to make an educated decision, I will go over some of those pros and cons and remain for any questions. To begin, the Tour de Marietta provides an economic benefit to Marietta, and specifically to the hotels and the downtown restaurants, as referenced by Adam Bouvet from the Mills Restaurant letter that was submitted to the City Council in support of additional funding. Additionally, Ernie Sanchez and Tour de Marietta staff have been amazing partners with the city for 18 years. If there were an organization to support, Tour de Marietta would likely be that organization. Unfortunately, there are consequences to providing additional support. First, it's likely that all other signature events will request additional funding. The city recently started a new fiscal year, and CSD staff will already be bringing back an item increasing the budget for holiday programming. Additionally, approving this action provides inconsistent messaging that the city will provide public works assistance through traffic control devices, and this adds liability as well as overtime cost to the city. The Tour de Marietta currently is the only external event coordinated through the Community Services Department that receives this benefit. As mentioned earlier, the Tour de Marietta provides a benefit to the Marietta community as one of the largest bicycle races in California, drawing thousands of attendees. They have a longstanding history of providing top-notch programming, and the children's bicycle race is extremely well-received by this community. What staff is seeking direction on is, first, is the additional $5,000 requested by Tour de Marietta acceptable to this City Council? And second, should the city provide public works staffing to install and remove traffic control devices? That concludes staff's presentation. I will remain for any questions. Additionally, Ernie Sanchez from the Tour de Marietta is with us this evening and will likely provide comment.
Thank you so much. So I'll entertain some questions, and then we'll take some public comments. First, I'd just like to say that Ernie came to me and asked me to bring this forward. It was my impression that the traffic control piece, which was very costly, was his issue because it, he said it couldn't be done by a private, a, a private venue. So he would like, wanted to keep it with the city, and if it couldn't be done with the city, then, then it couldn't go forward. So that, that's why, that's why I brought this forward, because it has been an amazing event. It's always been one of my favorite events, even though it goes in front of my house and makes it a little difficult to drive around sometimes. I have chased many bicyclists on, in my car. But, so, and I understand with all of that, and with that said, it just seems to me that this is overtime as well for all of our staff, and it's weekend pay. So it, I'm very surprised it can be done cheaper from an independent contractor. So, don't know anything about traffic control, and I'm sure that Ernie has tried to do that. With the question number one, whether we want to increase by $5,000, we just increased our in-kind service. So, speaking for, forward on that, it was never my impression or intention to bring more money to the event. It was to support the event by allowing some of those in-kind to be taken off and to ask the city to continue to do the traffic piece, with the in-kind, of course, paying for that traffic piece. So, I think that with everything we just looked at in our, our, our budget, our budget's been passed, we've already done an increase, and we've moved it to $10,000 for a signature event. And while this is a very unique signature event, I, I still think that a nonprofit needs to be able to stand on its own with respect to lots of sponsors. So, I'm not putting forth that I think we should go and, and increase the, the $5,000. I, I'm, I'm not for that. That will cause a trickle-down effect, and the city will be paying for many other signature events by increasing the cost. So, to answer question number one, I, I'm, I understand that wasn't my impression as I was bringing this back. So I just wanted to make that clear. It was only for traffic control. So I'll take the rest of the questions. And I see Councilmember Stone is...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did we, did we increase their in-kind last year to $10,000, or is, are they entitled to it this year? Ryan?
No, we increased it last year.
We did increase it last year?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, wasn't there a, a net proceeds of, a plus of $6,000? Yes. So you had a plus of $6,000. And the net proceeds that you raise, does it, does that go back to grants or scholarships within the community, or do you keep it and roll it over to the next year? Ernie?
Both.
Ernie, why don't you come up to the mic, please? Thank you, sir.
First of all, thank you, thank you for those questions. I think it should be clear that we're not just talking about a bike race. I think the theme today resonates with what the bike race is about. I've heard about how safe Marietta is. I've heard about our kids and keeping kids safe through other speakers today. I've heard about our kids and keeping kids safe through other speakers today. In addition to that, I've heard about the budget. Clearly, talking about a bike race at a time where there's so much to be done for our roads. The bike race, I think, contributes to all. Not only has it been an 18-year canned food drive for the local pantry that feeds people that need the food in Marietta, it also at a time where nationally, 70% increase in bicycle versus vehicle collisions, including in our own city, with e-bikes have increased so much. In fact, when you get a chance today, look at what people posted on Copper Canyon Facebook about e-bike concerns in that area where I live. The bike race provides a bicycle rodeo where the City of Marietta Police Department and the Highway Patrol help educate and bring awareness to our youth, as well as provide other opportunities. So it's not just a bike race. It also provides, about 70% of the people that participate in the event provides an economic support to the local businesses. But to answer your question, yes, there's $6,000 in revenue. We have approximately 120 members in the club. That is a nonprofit. There are no paid board members. The vehicle, the team has supplies and equipment, including a vehicle that's used to transport the membership to different places where our status as a nonprofit is required to conduct bicycle rodeos, which happen throughout Southern California. $6,000, as you can imagine, for a car payment, insurance, and other things that go towards its membership, doesn't go as far as one would think.
So the $6,000, how much of that went back into grants or scholarships, back into our community? Or did you use all of that towards operational costs?
No, I think that's a great question. I think last time I was here, in fact, I don't think. Last time I was here, we made some donations to the senior volunteers of Marietta Police Department. We also made some donations to the Border Patrol Explorers. We also made some donations to the California Highway Patrol Explorers. All volunteers that were present and are present every year at our event, as well as we donated some equipment to some underprivileged kids as we traveled to different bike rodeos. We donate everything from helmets to needed bicycles at times, as well as a bicycle donation we made at the last council meeting we were present, which was to our local rec center.
Okay, so do you happen to know how much out of the $6,000 went to grants and scholarships?
I think it would be difficult for me to speculate, but I would say $2,500.
Okay, so $2,500. And then, prior to us increasing our in-kind partnership with you, what did the City of Marietta allocate to you prior to going to the $10,000? What was it?
$5,000.
Okay, so you went from $5,000 to $10,000 last year, and you had a net proceeds of $6,000. And then $2,500 went back to grants and scholarships?
Approximately, yes.
And have you done your due diligence to find out what the cost increase for this year is compared to last year?
Absolutely.
And what is that?
Well, just for a traffic control plan, based on the requirements from the City of Marietta, we received two bids from two out of five. Three others decided not to bid. All city-provided companies. One was for $12,500, one was for $20,000.
And so the $12,500 in the $20,000 bid, that's for this year?
That would be for this year, correct.
And what was your traffic control plan, actual costs for last year?
The city-provided services for the same plan was $5,419.
And you're saying that your event is the largest bicyclist-type of venue in the state of California, right here in Marietta?
No, but I like that. We are the second largest.
We're the second, okay.
Redlands being the largest. I do take credit in the support that we receive from the city in saying we are the longest-running now, continuous.
Okay.
Because thank God, even when COVID hit, we were able to sneak it in before. And when COVID was gone, we were allowed by the city to bring it back and follow some very strict guidelines. And I think we were the guinea pig for other community events that followed.
Right. And Ernie, let's just go back. Forget COVID 2020 and 2021. Percentage-wise, from year to year, what type of growth are you seeing from this event?
Because of how difficult it has become to have events such as this in downtown environments such as Marietta and Redlands, our growth is such that we have to limit the number of participants. We are limiting the categories that can race to 100 per category times eight to nine categories per day, which is bringing 900 athletes to Marietta per event day.
I'm sorry, and why are you limiting the amount of participants?
For the amount, in the matter, for the sake of safety. You can only occupy so many people on the roads that we occupy here.
So you have a maximum, there's no additional growth for you at this point? You're at the maximum point?
When those new roads get built and slurried, we can increase, as long as they're widened a little bit.
Okay, well, you could tell staff to hurry that up.
Yeah, I think she said 2027, right?
And how many participants does the city host?
We see 900 participants a day just for paid athletes. We see another 300 local youth, children that get to participate for free on the Saturday event. We estimate that every participant brings four to five people to spectate, grandma, uncle, cousins, per day.
And do you have an estimated amount of out-of-towners that do come to Marietta?
You know, I did do a rough estimate, and just based on my numbers, I've estimated that approximately 70% of the participants are not from the city of Marietta. What's interesting is, I also did an estimate of the kids' race, where 70% of the participants are from the city of Marietta.
Fantastic. And I know that I received an email from Adam Bouvet, who owns the mill, who is very much in support of this. And this is what I love about the event. I love that it's a very unique event here in our region. I believe it's probably the only one in our region. For me, I'm kind of sad that you've capped it and you can't have any additional growth right now. That's very, very sad, because I believe that this really could be the number-one event in California. I love the fact that the participants are staying in our hotels, because we get that TOT tax, which is very beneficial in our public safety. And also, for this weekend, that these participants are eating locally and they're shopping locally, and that is a benefit to our residents. The mayor had some very valid points, and that is that if we were to gift you your request, that other nonprofits are going to be coming back as well. And with the reinstated Santa in the city, you know, that really is going to cost the city a substantial amount of money. With that said, I can't see giving you $5,000, increasing your event $5,000 in addition to having the city do an in-kind for you for traffic control and public works. So can you do one without the other?
Absolutely.
Okay. That concludes all my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holiday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, my, hey, Ernie, how's it going?
Good, sir. How are you?
My question is for staff, Brian. There you are.
Sorry.
You were hiding. So you said the Tour de Marietta has been with us 18 years?
Correct.
Do you know the longevity of the other three signature events?
Let's see here. I'm doing this off the top of my mind. I apologize for that. Susan G. Komen, I believe, is the newest one. I don't believe they get the full $10,000, so I believe that they have been here, I'm going to say, six to eight years.
Okay.
Marietta Rod Run, about the same amount of time. And the Field of Honor has been here 10-plus years.
Would it be possible, I already know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. We would be able to create a different category, because we have two to five, six to nine, and 10-plus. We could create another category that was saying, if you're over so many years, there's an additional benefit. Like providing Public Works traffic control. True?
We could bring back a resolution for the City Council to vote upon, correct?
Okay. What I'm trying to address is, if we do it for one, do we have to do it for all? And looking at Tour de Marietta as the longest-running partnership with the city, I don't know that that necessarily applies. We already have different tiers of support for the other events that are newer. So it would take a resolution at a future council meeting, but it's doable, right?
Yes, if the City Council so chooses, yes.
Do you see any problems with doing that?
I mean, it's an increase in cost for the CSD Department.
Yeah, we'd have to obviously increase the budget for that.
Yes.
Okay. That is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't mean to stand, correct you, but if I'm correct, I do believe that the Rod Run is at the $10,000 right now, correct? Ivan?
Actually, Brian would probably know the answer to that more than I.
I'm really sure they are.
Okay. I could certainly get that information as soon as I get to my office.
It was either last year that they received it, or it's this year that they received it. But I do believe that we were in a meeting, and that was discussed. So I believe that, I do believe the Rod Run...
They're at the 10-year mark.
Yeah, I believe this is your, they will get that $10,000, just so that you got the correct information. You're welcome. How much is the traffic element of this? What is the cost for that, Brian?
For city staff to provide it?
Correct. What would it be budgeted at?
I believe it's $6,600, and by mailing, our Director of Public Works is coming up.
Good evening, councilmembers. Ernie indicated that he paid $5,419 for his last year. We typically invoice about $6,600, which does not include our management staff time, because they are salaried. But it is an overtime for the Saturday/Sunday events, plus the setup of the traffic control on the days prior, and then no parking signs. So it's approximately $6,000 is what we invoice for. I said $6,600, but using Ernie's $5,400 number, it's approximately $6,000.
Okay, so if he's given $10,000 in kind, can you break that down for me? Is $5,419 pulled out of that $10,000? Okay. And then where is the other $4,600 and whatever? Where does that go?
So there's additional city fees they have to pay for. There's fire department personnel, ambulances, as well as significant police presence. We do, they have a police motor officer in front as well as rear of the racers.
Okay, all right. So if we were to, because I'm going to agree that I'm not in favor of the $5,000 either, but I would be in favor of looking at a way to do the traffic situation. So that would be where I would stand on it at this time. Thank you.
Can I add to your question, Madam?
Sure.
So I have the bill for last year. I have the bill for previous year. So it should be clarified that the Tour de Marietta always has a balance. So the in-kind has never covered all the services. The services that are provided are provided by Marietta's finest police department. They provide one person on Saturday and four to five people on Sunday, all on overtime, which is covered by the in-kind. The Public Works Department provides two people and a supervisor. The two people we see on Saturday and Sunday, they bring the cones, they bring the barricades, and they drop them off. We have about 120 volunteers over the two-day period that set them up, take them down, and put them on the sidewalk to be picked up. Last year, we did have a bill from Public Works of $5,419. And the amount that we still had to pay over the in-kind was just over $2,000. The previous year, the bill was $11,202, so we had just over $1,000 to cover. The race hasn't changed its format. The personnel needed doesn't change. What has changed is private vendors charge a fee that they want to bring the cones and the barricades, drop them off, and then pick them up and move them to the next. We've been lucky that Public Works has been very amicable to do that. And that is really the breaking point for the Tour de Marietta, would be the lack of support from Public Works.
Could you increase your entry fees? Could you get more sponsors to cover this important aspect for your event?
Both of them, great questions. We work every year with Brian's staff. We work with Laura Frazer. And we're already talking to Kaiser to try to help us in that regard. It's never for a lack of trying. There are some people that I think, when the time comes, and you guys say public comment, they're all people that we beg, borrow, and steal from, that you'll probably hear from in a second. So absolutely. Just one thing to remember is, we're still in beautiful Marietta. This isn't a metropolis. There aren't huge pockets out there for us to be able to bring along as sponsors. Redlands is only number one for one reason. When I retired from the Highway Patrol, I went to work for Yamava. They provide a budget of over $75,000 to the City of Redlands to make that event happen in their city. Unfortunately, we don't have a Yamava Casino Resort in this area.
That's true. But could you increase your fees?
To a certain extent, yes.
Would that be considered? Could you do that?
Without the $5,000, I can guarantee you that the fees will increase for 2024.
Thank you.
Moving on, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have Councilmember Lavelle in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you jumped in there, and I didn't see it. I apologize, sir.
No, you're good. You're good. I just wanted to ask, kind of on the sponsorship comments of Councilwoman Warren. Recently, KTM, that was, you know, bought the land and the building in Marietta, they acquired Felb Bicycles, which, as you know, is a huge manufacturer. Have you talked to them yet about...
Absolutely. So KTM puts their money, they lost a rider by the name of Rocky, and they do an unsanctioned, unpermitted, I'm not throwing them down, just the facts. You don't need to close roads for what they do. It just happened two months ago. And they placed their money and their effort to one of their employees that was a motorcycle/bicycle rider that was killed. They participated in our event. However, you know, their coffers are set to support the Rocky ride, and you can look that up. That's where they put their time and energy in this area.
So you have, I guess, inquired about their interest in sponsoring or being part of it?
I haven't directly spoken to a CEO, but I've definitely spoken to the coordinator of the Ride for Rocky ride.
Okay. I can talk to you offline about it, but I think there's a valid conversation there, because they're proud to be in Marietta and them having acquired Felb Bicycles. I think it's very fitting, and I think it's worth a conversation, so I just was curious.
I would welcome that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ashley Hutchinson?
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie.
Yay, I'm back at the right time for this. Thank you. So going back to the idea that I was speaking about earlier, I'm a longtime West Marietta resident. I live two lights away from old downtown. And this is something we all look forward to every year as a family. I live two lights away from Old Downtown, and this is something we all look forward to every year as a family. You know, I think especially given the fact that we live in a society that's obsessed with their phone, and kids aren't outside, and I see this all day long and how it's impacting people. It's really neat to live in a community that really regards fitness and bicycling and getting outside. So I would like to come back up here and just support the importance of making sure this stays a signature event, and that you, as a council, supports it in any way that you can. Tour de Marietta is an event that not only showcases the beauty of the city, but it also brings together the community while supporting local business. It's an opportunity for locals and visitors to come together and enjoy everything our city offers, including restaurants and hotels. This event not only attracts participants from California and the United States, but worldwide, making it a truly international affair. Tour de Marietta has gained a reputation for its routes, breathtaking scenery, and making it a must-have event for cycling enthusiasts. By supporting Tour de Marietta as an ongoing signature event that the city will not only have a chance to provide a world-class cycling event to Marietta, we will also be contributing to the growth and prosperity of the community. The event helps promote the city as a vibrant and welcoming destination for visitors from near and far. Furthermore, your support will positively impact local businesses, as participants and spectators alike will look for places to dine, stay, and explore during their time here in Marietta. This event provides a unique opportunity for local establishments to showcase their offerings and attract new customers. Please consider Tour de Marietta and its experience. The excitement and energy this event brings to our city as an ongoing signature event, your support will not only be greatly appreciated, but will also contribute to the success of this event for many years to come. That statement is both from myself and my father, former Mayor John Ingram, who could not be here tonight. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. Please continue supporting events like this that pour especially into the downtown area, which really needs continual pouring into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Williams.
Thank you for hearing us today. I'm, I'm here as kind of both a long-term resident. Moved out here in the summer of 1980. I live on, in Marietta, off of Washington and Weeping Willow. I've been involved in the cycling industry for many years and love Tour de Marietta. My family, my mother, Linda Williams, my brother and I operate and run the Richie's Diner, Marietta, and Temecula. So working in there, she has me serving food and bussing tables and that kind of stuff on Saturday and Sunday mornings, a little bit during the week. But I have seen, over that eighteen years, and especially lately, when I've kind of realized it now, I see the people coming into our restaurants. I see them spending the money. And that is great, because we had, what did we have, 70% or so of the people coming in from out of our area? They're coming to our area, they're seeing our restaurants, they're, my wife supports it and buys the water, and her rental license gets out to people. It's just, we're involving ourselves now with other people in this community. Living close by it, I've walked with my family since the time they were kids, come down here to Old Marietta and just watch the bicycle races. But I think what, what, more so than just the business, to me personally, I watch these kid races. I come down here, I look at the vendors, and I look at the, some of the dads might have been racing. Some of the, the kids, they get on their bicycles, they have that look inside of their, their face, like, man, my dad's there, my mom's there watching me. And it's a proud moment for the family. Families come together at this event. They get to just participate, and we really hope that they'll continue on. I watched my mother, as, as a young kid, through grade school and high school. I lived in Torrance, Redondo Beach, before we moved out this way, and she was always riding to the beach. Then she was up in Canada riding her bike. Then she was on the East Coast, she was in Alaska. That spurred me on to become a cyclist, to ride my bike. And I want to see that same thing for these kids, because I see that look in their eyes. And it's special to them, just as special as coming down to Richie's Diner and getting some pancakes right afterwards. But we really want to see that support for multiple reasons. We thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Graham Weaver.
Hello. Sorry. Hello, thank you for allowing me to come talk here. My name is Graham Weaver, and I've lived in Marietta all nineteen years of my life. And I'm speaking here today regarding your support for the Tour de Marietta. As a kid, I grew up growing to, going to the kids' race of this event, and it was probably the highlight of my year. After doing the kids' race several times, eventually I realized that it would be fun to do other races. This race served as a spark that ignited my cycling career. Going on to win the state championships, contribute to a national title, and race all over Europe representing the United States with my team. Now, now being selected for a U.S. program to develop athletes for the 2028 Olympics in L.A. This would not have been possible without the encouragement that I could, that I received from the Tour de Marietta that I was participating in as a child. I hope that you will support and continue to allow the Tour de Marietta to help stories like mine continue to happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Graham.
Keith Randall.
I've been a resident of the city of Marietta for a little over twenty years. Most of that time, I've, I own the small business Signs By Tomorrow that is located in Marietta. So I love this community. I've raised my kids here. As a, as a resident, I love having the tour here, because it, it brings notoriety to us. It, it brings entertainment. And, and my hope is that I won't have to keep telling people that Marietta is not a small town in Georgia. So we're, we're going the right direction. As a business owner, I believe what is good for the city is good for my business. We, we, we try to sponsor local events. Just yesterday, it was the, the fundraiser for the, for Michelle's Place. We work with Marietta Soup Kitchen. A few weeks ago, we were providing all the signage for a free event where the public is invited in for a Pioneer Days event, where, where free food is served, entertainment is served. It's all at no cost. We, we do this because I believe that whatever makes the city stronger will make us stronger. As a, as a small business owner, I, I have no misperception. I, I, I can honestly say I cannot think of a single time that someone has walked into our front door and said, "I'm here for the Tour de Marietta. Let's talk about a monument. Let's buy a banner. Maybe you can do some, maybe you can do some type of signage for us." But I know that these people are coming in, they're spending money at our hotels, they are spending money in our restaurants. They are, as, as Man said, they are exploring what we have to offer, and that strengthens the community. And as the community is strengthened, I believe that makes my biggest, my, my business stronger. So I am a volunteer for the Tour de Marietta. They, we, we have sponsored them longer than any other event. And it has had a great return, as anything we do for the city, because it's good for my business. I'm, I'm here tonight to share that with you, to also thank the city council for the support that the city has given to the Tour de Marietta for the eighteen years I've been involved in it. It is greatly appreciated. It is a great event for the city, and I appreciate all you can do for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Alan Long.
Thank you. I want to concur with what everything has been said, but also point out a few other things that I think makes the Tour de Marietta stand out from all the other wonderful events, the city sponsors. One, their staff. I, I've been involved in large-scale events in my, my workplace before I retired. World Series, Stanley Cups, Convention Center programs. And their staff is second to none. Not just in the people they are, but the professionalism and the organizational skill sets they bring to this, this event. That's, that's one item. And the second part is, we talked about maybe another tier of how we sponsor these, these events. I think it, it should also be based on the economic impact those events have on the community, which it's somewhat anecdotal at this time, but Adam Bouvet's letter should be a good gauge and testimony tonight of other business owners of, of how much income this event brings. And I think that sets it apart for most of the other events. In, in Anaheim, we get that all the time, where we do an economic impact study. Major League Baseball wants to bring their All-Star Series for the week, and they want everything for free, and hundreds and thousands of dollars. And in some cases, the city actually gains more by that event being there than, than if they weren't to have it at all. So they do give those in-kind donations. So there, there could be some sort of scale set there. I think lastly, and most importantly, is the community part of this. We are a city connected by community as a goal. And that, that children's race, for me, I remember having a discussion similar to this many years ago, when I was in that seat, on could we afford to sponsor it? I know for me where I fell is, we couldn't really quantify the exponential effect of that kids' race. But I remember saying publicly from the dais that, who knows? Maybe we're inspiring a kid who gets on the bike for the first time, and he continues, and he, he excels in that sport and gets a scholarship, maybe goes to the Olympics, or who knows, wins the Tour de France. And I think we just heard testimony, and for me, that was very gratifying. And I think not just being a community event, we have no idea what champion we're gonna inspire through that community's event. So I encourage you to do whatever you can. The, their payroll is, there is none. The staff truly gives you quality, professional level of organizational skills, and there's no salary. You look into some of the other nonprofits, and there's some heavy salaries being paid. They put everything back into this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. So I, I just want to reiterate everything that we've said from up on the dais and see if we can come to a conclusion. First and foremost, I'd just like to say that we thank the Tour de Marietta for choosing Marietta. And I remember being interviewed or doing a debate when I was first running, and they asked me what my favorite event was in Marietta. And it was a chamber question, and I didn't choose a chamber event. I chose the Tour de Marietta. So, so it is truly, I, I love the Tour, Tour de Marietta, and, and I thank everyone for all their time. And I've had a volunteer sit outside my house and trying to block the roads. And I mean, it is, it is an amazing event. Eighteen years is something to be said. So congratulations to you for being at the helm for that entire time. There's a lot of tough decisions that we have to make here, and I, I know this is twofold. I know I see my other council members would like to speak, but I'm gonna try to see if we can put a little synopsis to this and, and concur. And if we can't, then we'll bring it back. But first, I'd like to do two motions. The first motion would be that we keep our signature series event at the $10,000. Because I, I feel that maybe you'll have to raise costs. And then the second fold of that is, I would like to ask the city, because the cost seems to do, to be more conducive to cost, to support the Tour de Marietta by allowing us to provide the barricades and the city staff to make that happen. So that's what I'm posing as my motion, and I was wondering if I had a second to that. Yeah. Well, you can make the motion.
Yeah, a second, a second to the test, please.
All right, and then Councilmember Warren.
Yes. What is the, is that cost coming out of the $10,000?
Yes.
So the cost is, the in-kind would still be $10,000, but, but out of that would come the traffic control plan?
Right.
And whatever else in-kind that we give, up to that amount of money.
Yes, originally, originally Ernie came to me and said the city was no longer willing to do the traffic, and that that would be cost-conducive, that he couldn't make the, make the Tour de Marietta function. So what I'm asking for is for us, as a council, to say yes. Ernie, we will support the Tour de Marietta and everything that you bring, and that as a city, we will support your traffic.
Correct, and that will come out of the $10,000?
And that will come out of your in-kind.
Thank you, I just wanted to verify.
But we will do it again.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good clarification. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a, I have a question to our city attorney. City Attorney, if, if I'm not in agreement with this motion, can I present another motion?
I mean, you can, or you can let the motion go first. You can do either. I mean, you can suggest, yeah, you can offer an amendment, but you can, you can say what you would like and ask them to amend their motion.
And are we allowed to have discussion before we vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as there's.
I'd like to have, I'd like to make some comments before we vote, please.
And if I could just interrupt for one second, just to be clear, we'll need a motion. I mean, we'll need to bring it back with a resolution to amend the policy if we are gonna change anything from the current program. So if you wanted to continue the in-kind contribution, that would need a resolution, right, Brian?
No, because it's just a continuation, right?
Well, there was a special thing for one year only, though, right?
Well, the, the, if I'm understanding what the motion would be, it would be increasing the city's in-kind contribution. So in terms of the $10,000 in in-kind, they get that through the signature city event. If I'm understanding correct, we're also going to provide over and above that.
No, no, no. We're gonna, keep it like it was exactly last year, except the city will provide the, the traffic.
Then I don't know that a resolution would be necessary for that.
Part of the $10,000, not in addition.
Yeah, so not, I'm not adding anything more to.
But allowing the city to bake to do the service.
Right, just saying to the city, we want you to do the service, and that you can't say you won't do the traffic service.
Correct.
But he's gotta take that out of his in-kind of $10,000.
He did last year.
Correct, and, and anyone that goes above the in-kind contribution level would receive an invoice from the city for those services, and they would pay. So that I don't see, unless I'm wrong, Madam Attorney, a need for the resolution.
Okay, yeah. I want clarification. So we're gonna, so you're saying to give him the $10,000 in-kind donation in addition, the traffic control plan, the city would do at their cost of $6,600?
Let me, can I, if I can clarify one thing, because I think I, I see where the confusion is. So last year, we provided police and Public Works, and that came out of their $10,000. And Ernie said he paid an overage bill of $2,000 and change, correct? This year, the change was, is Public Works was no longer willing to give that in-kind service and told him he had to go elsewhere for that, and his bids were in the $10,000 to $20,000 range.
$12,500.
Was a lower one to $20,000. And so if we kept things the same as they were last year, Public Works would still be doing the same thing, police would still be doing the same thing. His overage is gonna be another $400 or more than what it was last year.
That's correct.
$500? $5,000?
Can you come up here, Ernie, because we can't hear you? Thank you. Sorry.
But it's, the PD's raised 10, 10%, so your PD cost will go up 10%.
So my visit last time I came to council was, yes, without Public Works, it's a deal breaker. We can't continue. The estimated cost for the police department fees for 2024 will be $9,634. So the in-kind will all go to pay the police department. And I will definitely be meeting with Councilmember Lavelle to try to make the $5,419 happen, so that I could pay the bill to Public Works. So the in-kind now is pretty much going to the police department alone.
Understood. Mr. Mailing, what was the reason for changing what we had done from the prior year?
Excuse me. I'm in the, do you mind if I answer that?
No, you can go right ahead.
Well, there you are. You jumped in the queue.
You can take me out of the queue then.
City manager, city manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, it's not that staff is unwilling to provide this service. It's that over time, we've come to find that our, our costs have increased significantly. And while we, we do try to give the best price possible, we're not always recouping our cost. Our public works staff, small staff, trying to get them, you know, all to work overtime. it's more and more difficult. And we've also were notified that, you know, a lot of our risk, as you know, costs have been going up. So there are lots of pieces...
Blaming Diego?
Yes, I am. And he's not here, so yes, he gets blamed. Yeah, when you go home, that's what happens. So it's not that it's an unwillingness to do it. It's becoming more and more difficult and more expensive for us. And that's why we have been having all of the companies go out and do that on their own. But if the council directs us to do this, then we will figure it out.
Thank you for the clarification. That was a disconnect. What has changed from last year to this year that's making this so onerous?
Oh, Diego came back.
Diego shouldn't have left. Madam Mayor, I would offer an amendment to your motion to create another tier for over 15 years, so 16 plus.
Let's let it go to a motion, because I'm not changing my motion.
All right. Can I, I'm confused, and I need some clarification before we move on, please. So you're saying that police has increased their cost to this event?
Correct.
And that was, what was it last year, and what is it going to be this year?
Last year, there are three charges from the police department. One is for $4,800, one is for $1,040, one is for $1,600.
Okay, so that's four, five, six, seven, something. Okay.
For 2024, the estimate that I have received from Marietta PD is for $9,380.
So $4,800, can you do your little math there? $4,800, $1,040, and $1,600 comes to what?
$8440.
$8440.
Okay, $8440, so it goes up a little less than...
$7440.
$7440, okay, $7440. So $2,000, let's just say that, $2,000. And then, traffic control is going to be, from the city, how much is that?
$6,600.
That's $6,600.
But that was also estimated, correct?
That was an estimate, yes.
At the high end.
Previously, in 2023, Ernie paid $5,419.
So that could go down.
It would only go up. It would not go down.
I was just helping. No, 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 from the 6600, that could go down.
That's why I estimated it'd probably be approximately $6,000 for 2024.
So traffic control, $6,600, what was it last year?
$5,400.
$5,400, so another $1,000. So right now, you've got an increase of $3,000. So one of the things about the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation is I'm a founding board member. They have national sponsors. They have major sponsors. And it is unlimited to the amount of participants that we can have for the race for the cure. With regards to the car show, the rod run, there's a rod run in Temecula, there's a rod run in Corona, there's a rod run in Chino. And then with regards to our military...
Field of Honor.
Field of Honor, thank you so much. That's a local event. Alan Long hit it on the nail. When you talk about an economic engine which this event is providing with 900 participants, 70% is 630 that are paying TOT, that are eating and shopping, there is such a huge benefit to this event. And the one thing that I want to make sure is Ernie has enough funds at least to break even, correct? At least we could at least break even with the inflation and costs of everything. And you are looking at an increase of approximately $3,000, because you don't know what other expenditures the sign company could be raising his prices based on material costs for himself.
He better not.
So let's just say hypothetically, it's going to cost you an additional $5,000.
I don't think you know what sponsor means.
But, and that goes back to, you know, sponsors for this event. When you have a maximum of 900 participants, and that's all he's going to have, you can't go out and raise tons and tons of money, because there's got to be the bang. There has to be a bang for the buck when a sponsor wants to sponsor an event.
It's $1,800 for the weekend. It's $900 a day.
Yeah, but it could be the same $900. We don't know. But regardless, this is an economic event that brings additional tax base. Our businesses thrive on this event. And I want to make sure, so you are saying that you're going to give them the $10,000, that's your motion, but in addition to the $10,000 in-kind, we are basically going to increase that in-kind by...
No, no.
Because you are, we are going to do the traffic control?
No, what I'm saying is what Ernie originally came to me for. He came to me and asked me, could you ask the city if they would still continue to do the traffic control for a small increase in price or whatever they wanted? Because I've gotten two bids, one for $12,000 and one for $20,000. And I said, sure, Ernie, I would love to bring that back. I love the Tour de Marietta. So that's what I'm doing. I'm bringing it back forward so we can leave it exactly like it was last year, so he will still receive the signature event of $10,000. And the city will provide the traffic barricades at a cost to Ernie of $6,600.
Okay, got it. I understand. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so shall we call for the vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry. So I got the motion. I just want to make sure that there is no other... There's not a substitute motion, because that one would have to be heard first. So seeing no more motions, is that correct?
Yeah. Okay, so we have a...
So if I want to do a substitute motion, I have to do it now. So my motion would be to add another tier at 16-plus years and increase the in-kind contribution to $12,500.
$1,500?
$12,500. So we have $5,000, $70,500, $10,000, and at over 15 years, my motion would be to raise it to $12,500, which would require us coming back for a resolution where the mayor's motion would not.
Just a caveat on that. In less than three years ago, we raised it 50% of our...
We need a second or that dies. If there's a second, you can debate it.
Is there a second?
Then we're good?
Okay. And call for the question?
You know, am I allowed to make a motion? No? Okay. I want to make a motion, and I'm going to make the motion to do the in-kind donation of $10,000. And based on his request, I want to add $5,000 towards the traffic control plan. That's my motion.
Is there a second for that motion? All right, I'll call for the original motion. Okay, let's vote on the original motion.
Well, let's see if I can do that.
Do we need to do a roll call?
To update the language, but we might just have to do verbal.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Yes, please. So I have a motion and a second?
Yeah, a motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
Yes, on that motion.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stone.
No.
Mayor, just made you the mayor, Ron.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holliday.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes, three, two. Oh, four, one. Yes, I'm sorry, four, one.
Counsel with Mayor Potem dissenting.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm exhausted.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you.
You know that, please look to us to try to help you find some sponsors for the event. You can get a sponsor for myself as well. I didn't sponsor last year. I'll sponsor you this year. I want to make it happen for you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now we're going to be moving back to public comments, non-agenda.
He got what he asked for. Yeah, that's what he asked me for. Oh, moving back to public comments, I'm sorry. Public comments for non-agendized public comments. Anyone? Fantastic.
Thank you, Ernie. Noel Wachowski. And Madam Mayor, as Ms. Wachowski comes up, I'd like to note that some constituents did have to leave due to the timing. They couldn't stay late. And so I have provided them my contact information so they could submit an email, and I would get it to the council and make it available to the public after receipt.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate you doing that, Madam City Clerk. And I apologize to those that were put to the end. So thank you for being patient.
Thank you. So those people who have left, you will receive what they were going to say?
Uh huh.
Great, good to hear. Thank you for your time. Appreciate the attention. I am here as a, my name is Noel. I'm the Marietta Forty Days for Life Campaign Leader. I'm here to go on record on opposing the opening of Planned Parenthood within the city limits of Marietta. Excuse me. Planned Parenthood is the nation's largest abortion provider. And whether they plan on performing surgical abortions or dispensing the abortion pill for self-managed home experience, these brutal services can have a lasting negative emotional, physical, psychological, and spiritual implications on women in addition to the taking of the life of a preborn person. Based on Planned Parenthood's most recent annual report, an unborn baby dies every 97 seconds within one of their clinics. Further, medication abortions, aka the abortion pill, has been released as a harmless process. However, the truth about this medication is that it is supposed to be prescribed under a physician's oversight and care, and it is extremely painful abortion that kills a developing child. Dozens of women have died after taking abortion pills. And according to the Mayo Clinic, a woman who undergoes a pill-induced abortion needs access to emergency services as complications including hemorrhage, infection, iso-immunization, and even death. Issuance of this pill within Marietta would not only cause harm to mothers, death to their babies, but it has and will send many women to the ER and further burden local emergency rooms beyond what they already are. Planned Parenthood has racist roots and makes their money by providing abortions to unsuspecting, fearful, and deceived women who are convinced that their worries and suffering will end by giving this for-profit organization access to their functioning reproductive systems. Notions that abortion can alleviate suffering for a young girl or woman is a lie. Abortion not only takes a life and stops a beating heart, it leaves residual pain from the physical trauma of the unnatural forced expulsion of one's baby, as we heard earlier from my friend Leah, the emotional and psychological trauma of having made the decision to allow one's own offspring to be taken away, and the spiritual trauma of the destruction of life with an intended plan and purpose by our Creator, God. There are over 14,000 federally qualified health center service sites that do the same things that Planned Parenthood does, except for abortions. Planned Parenthood is not necessary for women seeking health care, as abortion is not in any way care for a woman. Let's see, as Forty Days for Life is a grassroots, community-based campaign that draws attention to the evil of abortion through the use of fasting, prayer, peaceful vigils, and community outreach. It is a peaceful, although determined approach...
Thank you, Noel. Thank you.
Steven Sidlorsky.
Madam Mayor, Marietta, citizens and city councils, I'm my brother Steven Gerard Sidlowsky. And you may not be able to see it on the screen. I have a wonderful little human being peacefully developing in the mother's womb who is 14 weeks old. So when you can show that, that would be wonderful. Or you can see me after city council. I'll be happy to show you the video. I have left all of you some information on a new direction that you can go. It's kind of sad, because you do have a liberal-thinking Sacramento, but I am mindful that you have a conservative Riverside. And that's very gratifying for me to come and talk to all of you, because I have delivered to you a Personhood Strategic Action Plan. I've heard too much of the "A" word, even in the council chambers here. Personhood is the new direction, the new battle for conservative cities like Marietta. One of your challenges with Personhood, of course, is you can actually establish and pass a Personhood Resolution. I provided some language from other city councils where I've had these talks with. And when I do get a chance, I will modify the language so it states your city right in there for a Personhood Resolution. On the Strategic Action Plan, I've outlined responsibilities for the mayor and city council. I've outlined responsibilities for the church and community leaders. I can tell you, Madam Mayor, that the former mayor of La Mesa established an interfaith church group for that particular city, a smaller city probably than your city, but they met monthly, and they actually did wonderful, good things in the community. But they reported right to that mayor, and that mayor was Art Madrid. He's probably now retired, okay? And citizens and business leaders also have the responsibility to start promoting Personhood. We don't hear it enough, okay? I will be here available for any citizens who would like the package that I have left city council. You're welcome to take pictures of it on the camera. Beloved council members, I have left you a Bible book, Mark 2, with my information on the back. I consider myself one of the top speakers in America, in the USA, on Personhood. I look forward to interacting with each and every one of you in your and my spare time in the future. Until then, praise be the Holy Name of Jesus. Thank you for your love and sanctity of life. God bless you all.
Thank you, Steven.
Sarah Brown. I just deleted the reminder. Anita... Pottker? Genevieve Helfrich. Russell Stumpf. Steve Campos.
Good evening to you all. So I'm speaking on behalf, I'm a resident in Marietta for 20 years, and I'm embarrassed to say that this is my first council meeting that I've been. I've been to Temecula ones, been to school board meetings, and I'm speaking today as an individual. One of the greatest things that I loved, originally, I'm from the west side of Los Angeles. And my brother had moved out here to the valley, and I've raised my, we've been here 20 years. I'm a 26-year school, public school teacher. I'm also a school board member, one of the local school districts. And, you know, walking in today and just looking at that sign, "In God We Trust", is like very powerful for me, and it's one of the reasons why we chose Marietta when we decided to live here. And so obviously, I'm here in opposite... Um, and so obviously, I'm, I'm here in opposition of the Planned Parenthood. And I want to just make a couple different connections. Um, I, I'm sure you guys are well aware that they're coming after our children in every form. They're doing it to the unborn and the born. And it's happening a lot through the public school systems. Um, in April, I was at a C S B A conference in Washington, D.C. And I didn't make the connection at the time. But, uh, one of our keynote speakers was Javier Becerra. And Javier Becerra was wanting a way to find out how he can get his services into education. And I just, I thought it was kind of weird, um, just because it was like, well, you're in a whole different health, human services. Like, this is for public ed- education. Um, you know, Kevin Kylie spoke and did a great job. And they were all hitting the, uh, um, the message for, basically, for education. And then it dawned on me. In L.A. County, um, and I'm an L.A. U S D. product. I went to Venice High School, a proud Venice High School graduate. Um, but there are fifty Planned Parenthoods within L.A. Unified School District. And when I start to see that they're kind of making their way into the city, the city that I love. I mean, I, I love L.A., um, but it's not where I raised my kids. I raised my kids here. And they went through the public school system here, um, and also at Calvary Marietta. And so my warning is just to make sure that, that you keep an eye out as to what's going on in the public schools because they're trying to bring in health programs, all these other programs, Planned Parenthoods, to then, um, look at the, the students as clients. And hopefully that this will be shut down. It won't happen here in, in Marietta. And they won't have the opportunity to go into the schools and do what they've done in L.A. It, it's really a tragedy. Uh, when I think about it as a public educator, a public school educator, and as a school board member. Because to me, my job is to make sure that, um, we're there to protect at the safety of the students. When a parent sends their kids to school, you know, with the parental rights being passed, which I'm, I'm grateful that the Marietta School Board passed it. Um, and Chino did it, and hopefully Temecula will do it soon, and then, uh, Paris Union as well. Um, but I just want you guys to understand what's going on and that it, it's not just happening, you know, out there. It's happening here. And the fact that it's, you know, they're, they're bringing in a Planned Parenthood, I just hope that you guys will oppose this. Do whatever you can, uh, to make sure that they don't continue to do the harm that they do in other places. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public speakers?
That concludes public comments on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to governing board announcements, Madam City Clerk, Councilmember Warren.
File, receive. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
I also have nothing. Thank you.
I had something, but I'm quietly receiving it.
Uh, Councilmember Holliday.
I'll be quick. Of the things I attended, uh, one of them, um, which Brian's already gone, the ranger wrap at Alderwood Clubhouse. I had never been to a ranger wrap and wanted to see what it was. And there was a bunch of moms and dads and their little kids interacting with our Parks and Rec staff. And, uh, we had two people from the fire department there that, uh, offered to hose me down, which unfortunately I declined since I wasn't prepared with the proper attire. And the other thing that I wanted to highlight was I went to the topping-out ceremony at the Inland Valley Hospital where they set the, the last highest beam on and everybody got to sign the beam. Um, and while that was a, in Wildemar, um, it obviously, that hospital services Marietta as well. So those are the two things I wanted to highlight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Protem Stone.
I will defer to the next meeting.
And I will concur, defer. That's pretty good. Okay. Um, moving on, council members request to add additional future items to the agenda. Now is the time for council members to request to add items for future agendas. There'll be no discussion requests. A brief explanation of the requests may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any questions or requests for my colleagues to add anything to the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, goodness.
Me as well.
Oh, goodness. We're tired.
You want to go, you want to go first?
All right.
Age before beauty?
Okay. Uh, Councilmember, um, Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wanted to put a couple things on future agendas that are not urgent. Um, Madam City Manager, so don't, don't stress. Write that down.
Let's take it one at a time, sir. So your first item?
The first one is we currently have a loan facility for connection fees for the downtown area that, um, business owners, property owners down there can get a loan from the city for those connection fees for sewer. And I would like to have a discussion about, um, increasing that loan facility to include the construction because there's several businesses down there that just, it's not feasible for them to put hundred and hundred and fifty thousand dollars out to connect a sewer. So they're only allowed to be open one or two days a week because they're on septic. So I'd like to increase that loan facility or have the discussion about increasing that loan facility.
Is there anyone that would like to second that, to bring it back forward?
I will.
All right.
We need, we would need consensus from one other.
Yes, I need one more.
This is just for discussion on that.
Just for discussion.
Oh, sure, why not? Okay. And Stone. Okay, one more.
Yes, one more. Um, I wanted to put on a, and not an urgent one, but on a future agenda to have a discussion about the pros and cons of becoming a charter city.
All right. And do we have consensus on that? Hearing crickets? That one does not move forward. Um, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to agendize the possibility of doing a peanut butter drive for the holidays in partnership with Professional Women's Roundtable, P W R, to serve our food pantries in Marietta.
Well, I think that is fantastic as long as we don't use any city energy, but we can facilitate and push that forward from the dais. I would concur with that.
I concur.
Peanut butter it is. Okay, moving that forward. Anybody else that would like to bring anything to a future agenda? All right. Um, and now, uh, tonight, we adjourn our meeting. Um, but first and foremost, I'd like to extend our prayers and condolences to the families and communities affected by the Maui fires. Um, I know we have several Riverside, um, teams there helping. Um, and we've had a lot of tragedy, um, in our world. And, um, we've had a local tragedy, tragedy that I'm going to ask, um, Councilmember Warren to read a statement about our fallen heroes.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to take this moment to express our helpful, heartfelt condolences to the family, friends, and Cal Fire colleagues mourning the loss of Assistant Chief Bishop, Fire Captain Rodriguez, and Pilot Sousa. The dangers of our heroic firefighters deal with, that what they deal with daily while keeping our community safe is beyond measure. Please know that the city of Marietta, this council, and our citizens, our hearts go out to everybody affected by this tragedy.
Thank you so much for reading that. And I know, um, our hearts and prayers are for those families, um, of our fallen heroes, as well as for those families struggling to find their loved ones in Maui. So, uh, with that said, our meeting is adjourned with a motion? Move.